I like my name, U.S. State Library.
And to continue, let's finish them first. So it's done, we're going to crash. And then just center, either forward or some... But it was the other two. Check. One, two.
I would have totally worried about two fifteen.
You see, I'm worried about two fifteen. I was already too worried.
It was nice to have the TV.
I got about five or six more. We sit down. I hope it's good. Who knows?
Where's our fearless leader?
Have you seen Ted?
Luke, Ted?
He usually stays there and stalks around.
He might have been outside.
I think I saw his truck.
Is your agenda just something that's going to be really contentious?
I would say it would do well. I mean, three right now. They're very good to take some supply also. I wonder if I don't know. Like, man. They tell you?
I was gone ten days on time in my gaff. We will monitor, see how they approach writing up this?
Number ten, which is going to be only...
Will we get any more from Kevin?
No. Yeah, I don't like that Kevin's like, "I'm so anxious."
I said, "You..." Rick, do you think about this? Look at this, I'm a lot.
Goodness, ten hours of work.
Oh, here, hold on. He might be a gentleman.
Hey, you're open, what happened? Excuse me. I said, "No." No, it's not. She was here? Yeah, she was here. Okay, that's all. That's all.
We were busy.
I thought about that.
Yeah.
Yep. Here, thank you.
Did you say smelly?
Smelly, smelly. Smelly.
Okay. No problem.
What, you just had one?
Yeah. No, we didn't.
How you doing?
Yeah.
Does it not sound all the way?
How you doing?
So, how are you talking?
Hope everybody's cool?
We got what you need. Yeah. So, Amelia. So, we're going to find out.
We got the last one.
We have a thing about the...
So, do you want to raise your... You're all up? Interesting. Are you talking to get them? I literally went to the key thing. Level two. That is not a bad price. Yeah, we haven't played after. There are a lot of... Yes, maybe. When they're green, they're trying to make it.
Oh, here you go.
Here. We got it. Last minute. That's my last coffee, so let me go to it. Boy, trip me out more.
You're going to move to the side?
Or he's got a copy. Kristen, can you leave, do that in there?
There you go. Burn that, burn that.
Hey, I can, um, turn it off. Yeah, I don't know if they're going to hear it or not, but I...
No, the, um, the trailers. Ask when you see.
What is building?
If I decide it's going to ever use the whole, it's just going to... We're going to take a shot. What are you leaving here? Your husband, he comes and goes to bars and...
They were with me, crazy.
You take your kid to a bar?
It's not a bar, it's a restaurant. Oh, he wasn't there at that, that's just my husband.
Is his grandparents live?
My parents. They live like forty-five minutes away.
Does your husband's parents are alive?
Um, dad isn't, his mom lives in Chipotle.
Well, that's a little far. How far is Chipotle?
Um, thirty minutes.
It's an hour. They gave us relief on that dog.
Which?
Kristen's going first.
Okay. Barry, how you doing? Everybody got their phones off? Thank you, sir.
They got to start bringing us coffee. That'd be nice.
She's here, I just want to meet with her. Karen's not here. She's saying. I'm not sure who's doing it, though. When are you somewhere there for we to start?
I see a man on the... Politicians in this room. Boy, yay. That's something to do.
They quit bothering me so much when I retired.
Yeah?
I used to care about it a little bit, but now... Pretty much.
You get hooked now. Tiantang, all over there?
I do, but I have a twin fiancee. Most of it, most of it.
That's where he lives.
I was twin fiancee Chris here, I mean, twin fiancee with Mossy here. They're both in Tiantang.
Gavlos in.
I'm a few acres from nowhere, no doubt, ain't it?
Well, I do.
Are we, are we good to go then? Does Mac come in? There you go.
How many continuums do you think we got? I bet it's still...
Two, I'll say two.
Two, you got it. We're locked in.
Two.
You're all on?
I'm on.
Oh, I'm off.
You're off.
Mac, you ready?
I'm on.
You still off? If you would please stand with me and join us as we say the pledge and have an invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lord, we thank you for another time we can come together, Lord, just to take care of the business of Walton County. Pray that you'll just be with us as we consider these items. Lord, give us wisdom and discernment to make the right decisions for not only the county, but for the people who live here. Pray that you'll just be with those who come with us, come before us tonight, Lord, to speak, that you'll give them calm minds and understanding. Yes, these things in Jesus' name. Amen. Okay, well, open the meeting. First item on the agenda is approval of the minutes. Motion, second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that's approved. Announcements, and Mac, before you get started, I'd like to just let everybody know if you have, or ask you if you have not already done so, to please either silence or turn off your phones, or would you minimize distractions and disruptions? Also, let you know that we're going to have a nine o'clock time certain end to the meeting tonight. Would ask that if you plan on speaking, that you limit your comments to three minutes. We have a very long agenda, and we'd like to get as much done as we possibly can. However, we, we do want to make sure that everybody has an opportunity to have their chance to speak. Uh, Mr. Carpenter?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, uh, it's always, uh, a good thing when a large number of people turn out to support their local government and participate in the process. Uh, however, tonight, we have a very lengthy agenda. Uh, we have seventeen items. Uh, certain of those items are, we're going to request to continue. Um, but given what's coming behind these projects and the development pipeline, uh, we would request that, uh, you consider having a special planning commission meeting in the event we don't get through this agenda tonight, either next Monday or next Wednesday. At the pleasure of the board.
I would think that would be a very wise idea. I don't think people should have to wait another month to come back before us, so... Commissioners, what do you think?
Just Monday, Wednesday?
Monday or Wednesday, our, our facility today.
You talking about the eighteen on the twenty?
Yes, sir. It's next Monday, man.
Is there any day that y'all can't make it?
Good vote.
Either one, either one time. Wednesday better for you? Anybody have a problem with Wednesday? Mac, well, we plan on doing that next Wednesday. And I would say let's start at four o'clock. And I would like that that's another item I want to talk about when we get done with this one.
Okay.
Can we do it at four o'clock?
We can do it at four o'clock.
Okay.
Um, should we have a motion to set that?
We need a motion.
I'll make the motion. Second.
Motion is second, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. On top of that, Mac, I would like to discuss with the board before we get started, the potential of changing our start time from five o'clock to four o'clock on a regular basis. Uh, I think that would obviously give us an additional hour to get things done. Because I don't think anything good's going to happen after nine o'clock at night.
So, my mom always goes...
Well, I mean, I just...
It's ten, it's not my day.
You know, realistically, most people on this side and that side have been at work since seven thirty, eight o'clock in the morning. And once you've been doing that long, the only thing you're focused on is getting done. And you don't always make the wisest decisions when you think about just getting out of here. So, I think if we could start an hour earlier, it would help us to get through some things. You want a motion? I would like to make sure everybody's okay with that before we get too far down the road.
Well, the only thing that I'll say is that there are going to be some people that can't get off work to come down here and talk. And their vote matters, or their substance matters. And I understand and I agree, we do need more time. That a four o'clock start time makes sense to me. Unfortunately, I think there's going to be some folks that won't be able to...
I think there's a potential that people wouldn't be more difficult for some people to be there at four versus five, but I think that...
As long as we recognize that, it does.
I think we recognize that, but I also think that, uh, that is not that big a change.
Mac?
Yes, sir.
If, if we went to four, would it be possible to, uh, for citizens who have a hardship for the time to put them at the end? You know, make sure that they're at the end of the agenda?
I would know that.
I mean, if they, if they request it, would you honor that? Once our agenda is set, uh, it's ingrained, because we're creating the public record live, uh, a live recording. Um, we really need, um, and we accommodate anyone with a disability with a forty-eight hour notice that needs time to reorder the agenda, uh, to meet their, uh, request. And with a forty-eight hour notice, we can pretty much accommodate anybody. Uh, we'll try to take the ones that are continuing from a previous meeting first, um, and then check the balance of the projects in the order that, uh, they get ready to come to this particular meeting.
Do you want to click them up here?
No, you, somebody else didn't.
Okay. I, I, you know, it's always a consideration of BCC meetings start at four. I just, I think most people can, can make that adjustment if they have to.
Uh, and certainly someone can't be here. We do accept, uh, both mail public comments, email public comments, or handle those, uh, written comments. Uh, we're very happy through that. We do have some continuances.
Mac, we need a motion on this time change.
I make a motion, we change to four o'clock. Second.
Motion is second, any other discussion? Motion carries. Before we start on that, do we need to...
We do need a vote.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those, motion carries. Knowing what's coming down the pipeline, would it be, I guess, wise of us to go ahead and start planning maybe a second meeting if necessary?
As you know, the BCC has added one additional, uh, monthly board meeting just for planning items. So, the planning department has three opportunities to give projects to the Board of County Commissioners. If we had two opportunities each month to bring projects for your consideration, I think that would be great to help the development community. I think it would help the members of the board. Um, because as, as we all know, by the time we get to the end of the night with that long and contentious agenda, those products at the end of the, at the end of the agenda might not get their due consideration.
Well, I just think that, I mean, it's not going to be every month we would necessarily need that second meeting. But if we had something on a calendar in case we do, I think it would help plan the courses.
If we could have a regular scheduled, uh, meeting, uh, and then cancel it if we don't happen to need it, that would, I think that would be a good circumstance.
That would be the best way to plan that. I guess would be my question, would it be the following week, I mean?
Um, well, one of the things we do need to check on, uh, which we haven't had a chance to do yet today for the, the prospective second meeting, is the availability of this room. Uh, certainly, uh, once we move to free board areas, it's going to be another, uh, satellite boardroom there, uh, available to us that might not have quite the traffic that this one does. Uh, this BCC meets here also, uh, and we have quite a number of other meetings.
Is that something you could check on, let us know next Wednesday?
We can certainly check on that and let you know about the next Wednesday meeting.
Okay. That's good. That's all I have.
Thanks, sir, for considering those things. Uh, we do have some, uh, requested continuances tonight. Uh, item number two, uh, staff is requesting that we table the transportation element. Uh, we're waiting on a final scope of work from our consultant Renaissance, uh, with regard to the mobility piece study that we'll be moving forward with. Um, so that one's not going to bring through yet. Uh, the capital improvements schedule, our public works, uh, and planning staff are still working on that, and we'll bring that to you on July twelfth. We'd like to request a continuance to July twelve for the capital improvements element and tabling of the transportation element.
And that's all on item number two?
Yes, sir.
Is there anything on item number two that's, that you don't, that you want to talk about tonight?
No, sir.
So, the whole item number two would be continuing until the next...
Yes, sir.
Regular meeting?
Motion to continue.
If you like, well, four P.M. in this, right?
Motion to continue.
We have a motion is second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item two is continued.
We also have a request to continue from staff for item number four, which is the Chapter Six Amendment that's going to deal with recreational, uh, vehicles. If we can continue that until July twelfth also, that would be our request.
Misses?
Motion? Second.
Motion is second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Six months, we have a request to continue item number seventeen, which is not quite ready to be reversed. That's the hint and drive abandonment, and we're requesting that be continued to July twelfth at four P.M. in this location. Motion to continue. Second.
Motion is second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
And with that, uh, we're ready to start the legislative portion of the agenda. First item is the U.S. Three Thirty-One Economic Development Corridor Plan, uh, public workshop. And I'll turn this over to Kristen Schell to introduce this particular item.
Good evening. I, I do have a Three Thirty-One presentation, but I can't honestly remember if I already gave it to you. I probably did, so you may not need to hear it again. But, um, our scope of work for this project does require that we transmit, uh, comprehensive plan amendments by the end of the month. So, you see the amendments in your packet, they're, uh, on page four of the memo that was provided to you. And basically, what these amendments do is they incorporate the Three Thirty-One Economic Development Corridor Plan recommendations into our comprehensive plan. And they would really, in essence, authorize staff to begin to work towards implementation of the plan's provisions. The main, the main goals, uh, that are in the plan, and, and we should have the, the actual plan document by the time this, when this comes for adoption. So, you'll have had plenty of time with that. Uh, but the main goals are here in this draft, and, uh, there are the things in the table there. Really is to, um, understand that we want to incentivize, um, certain types of development that are seen as advantageous, mixed-use development, development that promotes, um, jobs and affordable housing, and development that minimizes impacts to the transportation corridor itself. And the plan establishes an incentive program to do that, that makes those developments as of right, meaning they would not come to you and to the Board of County Commissioners for approval, and would be issued development approval, uh, on a staff level very quickly.
This is, if I'm not mistaken, the same thing we did for the Mossy Head of Dutch Department. Is that correct?
Sort of, um, that was, I think you went in and entitled that development fully so that people didn't have to do really anything, any engineering or, um, permitting or anything like that. This would basically eliminate our lengthy review process. So, we call it as a bright development, so you don't need any kind of board approval to do that type of development. So, it's a staff approval, it's really quick. It's like a lesson, you can think of it like a lesson learned where we issue those in a couple of days or two weeks out of the planning department.
Regardless of the size of the development?
That's correct.
But those are limited, right? Limited?
Yes, and that's a big decision point, I think, and, and we have been talking about that, uh, throughout this process. But the way the goals and objectives are worded now is that we are targeting and incentivizing development that promotes, uh, the county's values for the corridor in terms of affordable housing, mixture of residential types, um, job creation, so economic development as opposed to economic growth necessarily, and also, um, mixed-use how, uh, development or traditional development that creates its own amenities, um, you know, which would alleviate trips on the, the road facility. That's, that's the first objective that's there, um, and also it's, um, goal one in the, in the plan's priorities. You know, that's a decision point, you know, you know, you can decide to go that route or decide to open it up totally, or, um, you know, it, it, we have a powerful incentive tool.
Tell you my thoughts on it real quick. I, I completely agree with what we did with Mossy, but that has, that has to be approved at the BCC level. Correct? I think, just my thinking is, you're talking about the entirety of U.S. Three Thirty-One in Walton County, south of Iton. And that's a much larger area. There's going to be a lot of different types of development that want to be done there. And I can't see, um, making it too easy. I, I prefer at least a BCC approval is what I prefer on that. That's just me. I mean, I, I don't have any problem with staff, I have total confidence in staff, but I think because it's such a large area and diverse area, that I think some oversight is still needed. That's just my thoughts.
For all development or for, um, you know, you, you mentioned earlier in when you were talking about the various types of development that could occur, would there be some type of development, let's say someone wanted to do, uh, a new urbanist community or something like, uh, mixed-use, a, a really nice project, would you entertain?
I would feel more comfortable with wanting to be at least a BCC approval. That's just my thing.
I think I agree. I think there has to be some mechanism for things that large for the public to have input.
I think so.
And if you don't have some form that the public can come, I, I think you're breeding, uh, miss, you're breeding, uh, problems for the future.
Just, just to clarify now, the public would have opportunity on any rezoning or land use change. So, this would only be if you were doing certain types of development that are within the code in the comp plan. It would not, you know, anytime somebody wanted to increase densities or change their zoning land use, they would have to go through the public process, the, your board and the county commission.
So, if everything that they're talking about meets everything in the code, then that's what we're discussing. If there's going to be any type of variance or change in land use, just it would not, that wouldn't fall under this.
That's correct. And, you know, really, the case on that corridor is going to be that where somebody will most likely need a land use change because it's mostly low-density agricultural land uses. Um, so they would still be subject to that process. And, and Mac mentioned as well that we do have the TRC meeting that is an opportunity, and that wouldn't go away, and would still stay at that level. Um, but that is a very common, um, development scenario for most local governments where you have a code and comp plan and a, or a vision or a plan. And if the project meets those requirements and goals, it is as of right development. But it...
Well, I'm okay with that.
Yeah.
I guess what I, what, what concerns me more is when they're looking for land use changes. Things, those can get pretty contentious.
Absolutely.
Would certainly not want to take the right of the public away progressing their BCC.
Yes, and that, that would stay, that, that would not be changed, and, and I probably will have a lot when this all happens.
Is this in the blue area on the map down there, is that what it is? Because my map is blurry and can't read what the legend says.
Because my map is blurry and can't read what the legend says.
Let me show you what the map looks like. This is Eglin's map. This was sort of another decision point. And we did have two workshops with the Board of County Commissioners. And they, in both of those workshops, indicated that they would like to be compliant with Eglin's small area study. So I think they've kind of made that decision. And that's the northern area.
So most of this is.
Go down to, it's like it was called.
Page six.
I didn't realize that had so much stuff on here, sorry.
But it's a specific area within the 331 corridor?
There's two areas, really. There's two activity centers, and I'm trying to pull a map up for you. One is just north of the, when you get to the north part of the bay, right across the bridge, large activity center there, sort of between Freeport and the bay, south of Nacouci. And the other activity center is north, close to Defunean Springs. And that is the one that is subject to the Eglin Small Area Study. They have some restrictions in that small area study dealing with height, lighting, and really, they don't want a lot of residential density because the site C6 landing is right there. So that has to be treated separately. And we will have to craft that into whatever we decide. And I think the board has given us pretty good direction on doing that. Yeah, see this map? Those are sort of the activity centers. If we can get a little bit bigger. The peak kind of hatching area of the south activity center is what we're recommending expanding to. Yeah, I don't know if you can, how well you can see that. But the land use categories, you can see, I mean, they're predominantly, the green is agriculture, the brown is, I think, estate residential, and there are rural residential, one of the two. So they're fairly low-density suburban-type categories that really don't allow for a lot of mixed-use or job-creating development. And you, I think, want to encourage a mixed-use to reduce trips on the road facility and to create whole community. So we're probably going to have to do something to incentivize that. And we probably will see a lot of land use changes just because of that. So I don't think a lot of things are going to happen without coming through the board, really.
And my concern is just with changes to land use and stuff, that's something that people get pretty contentious about, so rightfully so. So, but this would not change that part. They would still come if there's any change inside of the plan?
That's correct.
I'm okay with that.
Yes, and we still have a lot of implementation work to do. You know, for instance, one of these policies also deals with, you know, controlling driveway and access to the corridor, median separations, those types of things. We're going to be looking at how, on the development side of things, we can prevent too many negative impacts to the functionality of the corridor, the speed and the capacity. So a lot of details are, you know, this is very 10,000 feet at this stage, and it really just says, you know, you have authorization to move forward with those.
This is the first step.
Big concepts, yeah.
Well, I'm okay with that. Commissioners?
We need to?
Yeah.
Public comment or anything?
Yes, this is a trans-skill hearing.
I don't have anything.
We don't have anybody who signed up on anybody who would like to speak? Take the message, propose the public comments? It's a pleasure.
I think it sounds good. I think it's something that makes sense as long as they, you know, any land use changes have to go through the proper steps. But usually by the time they get to us, they've gone through the planning department, there's not much they need to do anyway, so.
We have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a second?
Second.
Second. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioners. Mr. Chairman, in the interest of time, if I could suggest that staff would request to continue item number three to next Wednesday's meeting, since we've scheduled that already, that might help us with the next agenda.
I'm okay with that. Anybody have any questions or concerns?
If you guys get the rub agenda, can we go ahead and do them?
Do what?
If we get the rub agenda.
Tonight?
If we do, you know.
We don't know. We'll discuss it when we get there, if we get there.
You need a motion, you got?
You need a motion to continue?
Yes, sir.
Motion to continue?
To next Wednesday.
To next Wednesday.
4:00 PM, this location. Second.
Motion is second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Should we knock this thing out?
Yes, sir. We have had a remote request tonight. Karen, who would normally be here taking our minutes, unfortunately is very, very severely ill. She's doing her best to try to take the minutes off of the live feed through the internet.
She don't like me clicking up, then?
No, I already got my instruction on that. But what she would request is if the chairman could recognize who makes the motion and who makes the second, just to ensure that we give proper credit in the minutes since she's unavailable to sit right here for his time.
Okay. All righty.
Thanks, sir. Then that moves us to item number five, the King's Small-Scale Amendment. This is a request to approve by ordinance. It's been reviewed by Bob Barante. It's a small-scale amendment requesting approval to change the adopted future land use from rural village to general commercial on approximately 2.22 acres. The project is located at the southwest corner of US 331 and Short Avenue, just north of the Chautauqua Bay Bridge on the west side of US 331. We'd like to request that the staff report be entered into evidence.
Accepted.
And the applicant is here to present their case.
Good evening, I'm Scott Jenkins with Jenkins Engineering. What a great segue for this project. You were just talking about this corridor, and this is the process you guys are kind of talking about. I'm here representing the applicant. They actually own the 2.2 acres as adjacent here to the new 331 alignment just north of the bridge. It's a short avenue. They are requesting a change from rural village to general commercial because of some of the changes in the area with roadways and things. And that's going to be the move for the corridor, for more commercial uses. As you can see, the adjacent property is here. We have 331, this is the property. There is adjacent general commercial to the north and across the road on 331. There's also an industrial parcel that's north here and some other scattered general commercial uses. All of the uses along 331 in this general area are basically commercial in nature through here. There are no weapons on the property that puts on consideration. So it really makes a lot of sense, I think, what they're requesting to do. We have to answer any questions you guys have about this, but it would fit in nicely with the 331.
What, I'm just curious, because there is residential behind that?
Yes, there's.
Okay, so what type of commercial are they looking for?
Right now, we've conceptually laid out a potential kind of convenience store and restaurant facility on the site. And we did that just to see what would fit, basically.
Right. How big is it, two?
2.2 acres.
Two?
2.22, yeah.
That's really close to the new park, right?
It is.
Sort of trying to run into it.
It is, yes, very close, almost adjacent to it.
Yeah.
It's Elwell Ice.
Ice, bait, type of things like that.
Beer?
Oh, I don't know.
I believe that that is more of a commercial, as you said, it's a commercial area. But I just, I want to be careful because of those houses, people who live behind it. I think you've got, when you start developing, you forget about that people.
Well, they'll have to come back for that, and we can work on buffers too, so.
Yeah, they will.
And that's just, I'm just saying for you, and I know you understand that. Those people live there a long time.
I fully understand. They will have to meet all the buffer requirements and those things whenever they do come back.
I got any questions?
Any other questions to develop?
Thank you.
Will the public comment? Nobody signed up to speak? Is there anybody who would like to speak? See, and then we'll close the comments. Commissioners, what's your pleasure?
Motion to approve.
A motion?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Gladwell, second by Mr. Perry. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners. That moves us to item number six, the Mallett Small-Scale Amendment. It's a request to approve by ordinance. It's been reviewed by Bob Barante. This application is submitted on behalf of Susan Mallett. A request for approval to amend the future land use category from conservation residential to low-density residential, which is 4 to 1, on approximately 9.94 acres. Project's located on the east side of Hunter's Road, approximately one-half mile north of US 98 and County Highway 30A intersection. It's identified by the parcel numbers in your package. Commissioners, you've received two additional public comment letters that came in after the package we delivered. We'd like to request that the staff report be entered into record. And the applicant is here to.
Assistant, of course, accepted.
Present their case.
Good evening, Scott Jenkins, Jenkins Engineering. First, I'd like to say I appreciate the county putting all these together for our items tonight, so that helps a lot. This is actually a re-hearing of a request that has been amended from last month. You guys may remember this piece of property. The property owner was previously requesting a change from CR2 to infill, which would have allowed multifamily. We worked with staff, and we've reduced that request down to what would be low-density residential. That would limit the development on this property of strictly single-family on the piece of property and allow them to develop in more of a transitional pattern from south to north, which is adjacent to Beinview. But you guys kind of heard this already. I'll just run through the highlights really quickly. This is the parcel. It's approximately 9.9 acres. Has an apartment site in the south, single-family residential to the north. And again, the request is to amend this land use to a lower density, which y'all heard last time, that would allow strictly single-family residential, so.
It takes out any multifamily?
Yes.
And that to the south of it's 12 to 1 in it?
Yes, it's business use, that's correct, which allows 12 to 1, that's correct.
Okay.
Now, we have to answer any questions, but, you know, I think you guys, you may be just.
Well, I think that's a much better plan. I know we've got the two additional letters, one's for, one's against, but I thought that would make sense. I think this is a much more reasonable plan for that piece of property. Commissioners, any questions to develop?
No.
Thank you.
Don't go too far. Open up public comments. Fred Tricker?
Thank you for representing softball community council. I was at the last meeting when we discussed this project. And my memory's not that good, but I do remember the applicant stating that they were going to reduce the density down to 4 to 1, which is what's being proposed. I don't know what's changed. So it was denied last time on the basis of a 4 to 1 ratio, four homes per acre. So I don't know that anything's changed. That's why it's coming back up again. It looks like the same thing that we already discussed.
They had the option.
It was denied last time, with a different land use, where they could have had multifamily.
It was neighborhood infill, and there was a question about whether they could do the 4 to 1, you know?
I remember that.
But the consideration was, the consideration that you went through, the deliberation was based on 4 to 1.
Okay.
And that's exactly what they're proposing. So I don't know why they're doing it again.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Nancy McCullen? No comment? Anybody else that didn't sign up would like to speak? Don't see none of applause, close public comments. Commissioners?
Well, I think it's the kind of transition that we look for from something as dense as 12 to 1 all the way to 2 to 1 behind it. So I think it works well, and this is exactly what we're supposed to be doing in cases like this. I'm in favor of it, as I was last time. But I think they've made it a better situation with it being all single-family residential.
I think taking the possibility of multifamily out is very positive.
Agreed.
Anybody else?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
We have a motion, and we have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Could you state the motion and the second?
Oh, that was Lee and Mr. Roberts. Motion is second.
Thank you, Commissioners. That brings us to number seven, eight, and nine. These are all related to the same development. The first request is Waterfalls by the Bay, large-scale amendment, request to approve by ordinance. It's been reviewed by Dan Brown. It's a large-scale amendment submitted by Jenkins Engineering on behalf of J and L Eagle Co., requesting to amend the future land use map from the designation of conservation residential 2 to 1 on plus or minus 27 acres to the designation of low-density residential, which has a 1104 units per acre. Project's located on the north side of Wald River Road, east of East Hewitt Road, and is identified by the parcel number in your package. We request the staff report be entered into evidence, and the applicant is here to present their case.
You're up, sir.
Yes, sir. Want my approach?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Sid, do we need to worry about things before we go around?
No.
Have this reviewed before we go around? You good, Sid?
Mr. Thier, this was like a lot of work.
Not too much.
Okay. Now, let me ask you, are we, Mac, or maybe Sidney? I mean, this is, there's three different items for this.
Right. And they're separate but related.
They're separate, but they're not separate. So how do we need to, can we hear everything and then make decisions on each item?
That's up to you. I think that's.
I think that would be much easier and probably a lot easier for everybody to follow if we do it that way.
That would work for us, sir.
Okay.
And for the record, my name is David Thier. I represent the applicant, but I've just handed out, I'd like to walk through it very quickly. It's our set exhibits. Tab one is just the conceptual master plan for Waterfalls by the Bay. Tab two is the site plan. Tab three is our PUD report. Tab four is a land use compatibility analysis for the future land use map change. Tab five is an analysis of the density, lot size characteristics, and housing types for the PUD. It was an analysis of the surrounding subdivisions and comparing density and lot sizes to our project. Tab six is the PUD overlay ordinance. It's still in draft format. Tab seven is an example of a nature observation deck, and we'll be discussing that a little bit this evening. And tab eight is a memorandum of agreement. I'd like to spend a moment on this, and I'll turn it over to Scott Jenkins. Within the last few days, we've, the applicant, J and L Eagle Co., and Kristi Callaway, who worked very closely trying to resolve any concerns that has Callaway had regarding our project. And we were able to enter into a memorandum of agreement that we would amend our application to include these three items. And it would resolve her concerns with our project if we did so. So this is a last-minute tweak, but it's because we've been working with our adjacent neighbors to try to resolve any concerns. Item one is in the memorandum of agreement. Ms. Callaway requested that we.
Where's that in our book here?
It's in tab eight.
Tab eight?
Tab eight. Our PUD report had a analysis of the regulatory program that protects bald eagles, and this Callaway wanted us to include those two pages in our, as a condition of our approval, and it would run with the land, so that the bald eagle would be protected pursuant to the regulations that are addressed in number one. In number two, and if I could turn you, there's an exhibit D. It's the last page of exhibit A. Exhibit A, you'll see a site plan, and it's got some green highlighting. Originally, that 3.71 acre portion of our project was designated as open space. Ms. Callaway has asked for us to make it a preservation area, and have, put this piece of property into a conservation easement to ensure that it would not be developed moving forward, would run with the land, and my client has agreed to do that.
Mr. Truett, just a quick question. Do you have a copy of this available, or electronically, where those sitting out there can see what we're looking at?
Let me check. It may be on the slideshow, so if you'd like.
It would just be helpful, I think, for everybody to understand where we're going.
Let me see if I have it on there, sir.
Okay.
And you've just pushed the maximum technological-
I'm glad she knows how to do it. I don't have to figure it out.
There you go.
Okay, thank you.
The area that's designated, that's highlighted in green, that's what we originally had, it's open space, and that's what we've agreed to make a preservation area and include it in a conservation easement, so that it won't be developed. And that would also run with the land if we get approved. And then the last item is number three. We had saw the deviation to have a zero-foot buffer next to the rear setback adjacent to the 25-foot wetland buffer area. Ms. Callaway has asked for us to increase that to five feet. So, we've agreed to go from zero to five.
Which would, would the effect would be a total of 30 feet buffer?
Yes.
That's on your rear setback?
On your rear setback.
On the rear setback, adjacent to wetlands. So, we're providing more protection, and we've agreed to do that. And if we get approved, that would also run with the land.
Okay.
So, I just wanted to bring those tweaks to your attention, and I want to thank Ms. Callaway for working with the applicant to do the research. So, I'll turn it over to Scott, if you don't have any questions.
Scott Jenkins, James Engineering. I'm going to, I know there's three different requests, but you kind of got to talk about it all together, so I'm just going to give an overview of what the, what the project consists of. We've actually been working on this piece of property for about 13 years, whether it or not. It's just quite amazing. It's been through a lot of different conditions, been through a lot of different ideas, been through a lot of down markets, things like that, and put it on hold. But we're finally to the point now where I think we've really got a great plan for this piece of property. And just to run through the highlights of it for you real quick, this is kind of a colorblind review. This is Alderbury Road to the south, which is off of Hewitt, just to be blessed here. This Chuck Hatchey Bay. The total property is about 72 acres. What's being proposed tonight is a land use change and a portion. This is kind of interesting, because this whole property is, it's actually two parcels that run all the way from Alderbury to here, 54 acres and a day of 18 acres, a total of the whole thing. It's got a split land use, which is a little bit unusual. Usually, if you have one parcel, we have same land use, whole thing, but this has a split land use. So, because of that, we're actually dealing with the south portion of the 54 acres, and then they're taking that and doing a PUD overlay to the whole property to blend everything together, so that it kind of works seamlessly. On the 72 acres, we're proposing 128 single-family residential lots. They range in size from just under an acre to about 0.1 acre, so in size, some smaller interiors here. One of the interesting things about the property is actually that all the, all the wetlands have already been placed in conservation easements. They have very, very limited impacts to any wetlands on the piece of property. They've really worked around the terrain and the, and the natural environment of this piece of property. The proposed density will be about 1.7 units per acre, roughly, on the piece of property. We do have, as Adrian pointed out, this area will remain in conservation. This area, this area up here will also remain in its natural state. There's a bird watching the laboratory here. One of the interesting things about this piece of property is our active eagles in the area. There's an eagle's nest that's located about right here, and a portion of this area is within 660 feet, where you have to provide some special considerations and take care of destruction. So, we actually removed most of the development in this area and left it in its natural state. There's kind of a secondary nest over here that's not used right now, but that's one of the reasons why this was left in conservation, in case you were wondering. Again, 72 acres total. The PUD consists of 128 lots on that 72 acres. The, the, this is a conceptual PUD, given that there's a lot of detail in this for you guys. There's been a lot of work done, and the plan is to do, but the tension happening in the area, the really nice creek system that kind of runs through here, that will remain the actual number of lot, and that's one of the things the neighbors have been concerned about. But it's really fortunate that we've been able to work with the property owner to prove it made this fit into the area. I think that would, we have an answering question, do you guys have, about the layout of the certain aspects of it that are kind of highlights?
I have a question about, yes, ingress, ingress into the neighborhood.
Mm-hmm.
What's that going to do to those local roadways, what kind of capacity they have?
Yeah, Hewitt and Alderbury, Alderbury's here. This roadway was paved, gosh, several years ago, I guess now, and the developer of this property actually took part in paying for the paving of that roadway. From a capacity standpoint, I don't think you'll have an issue, because this is the end of Hewitt Road, and not that many trips that generate from there. From a capacity standpoint, from Alderbury, you really have undevelopments located here, which is in the Bay, but not that many homes. But one thing that we have to be careful about, we had a little community meeting to talk about this with the residents, is the shape of the roadway. So, if there's anything that occurs to the road that impacts the asphalt, structural capacity of the roadway, things like that, it really needs to be the responsibility of the developer to fix it up. So, they need to document those things upfront. But from a capacity and concurrence, concurrence standpoint, it probably won't have an impact on the roadway.
Is, we're just over 70 something homes to what it is?
128, 72 acres.
Are the roadways in the interior, do they meet the code?
Yes, they're 24 feet wide. It would pose to be 24 feet wide with, by the way, some sidewalks and standard roadways along. So, we did have to oppose two accesses for the firefly and the store behind us, so that's why we have to.
I don't have another question.
No. Not right now.
Not right now?
Okay. Thank you.
We're going to open up public comments, and we have Kristy Callaway. Would you like to speak, ma'am?
Yes, Kristy Callaway, Alderbury Street Road at the end. And I think I've seen the main meetings, because it has been a long time for this development. And as they said that, you know, I do also appreciate the past meetings and input, especially Mr. Stewart and Ms. Harris when she was on board, and Mr. Ridgway. Yes, your concerns about these, what Scott was talking about. I mean, this is a unique piece of property with the eagle nest on both sides. I mean, the eagles have moved. This is their third move, and they are doing well on this western side, but they were originally on the, wait, they're on the eastern side now. They were originally on the western side. So, those were a lot of my concerns that I've had with, gosh, Ms. Sheenell, and Ms. Danielson, Mr. Underwood, Mr. Barton, Mr. Brown, and Mr. Callaway, and they've been very nice, explaining to me what, as we've gone along, what your requests were, what their requests were, and I think Mr. Jenkins, Mr. Um, gosh. The Blumberg's are, yeah, meeting and working with them. I really feel like with these last three things that I asked, you know, that I, I mean, I understand the two, the division with the, with the properties, and that those were made a good long ago, and that with the eagle protection buffers on either side, like the preservation of 3.7 acres, which is in that 660 buffer for the eagles, if they do move back to their original nest site, and also because of the wetlands and the estuaries on the, on the bayfront, and the health of the bay, all of that was a concern for me, that also in the arena, the lot buffers, that it would be surveyed, it would be staked, when they got to the point of land clearing, that those buffers that protected those wetlands jurisdictions and those estuaries at the town and Hot Town Bayou, you know, all hopefully remain in their, in their healthy state, which they are now, because this year, they've always had three babies.
Wow.
And flesh. So, I really appreciate the county's help, and making me understand it, and the developer and the engineer working with PMDs. And if this does go, if that, this will grow with the land, and I'm talking for all three, because I know there are other things at the point before that.
So, you don't want to have her talk two more times?
I'm not. No, this is, that's why I'm spending a little more than three minutes, because I did want to cover it all and say, yes, with these things in place, I feel like everybody has worked together, and, you know, I'm really good with it. I've talked with several old timers, I call us old timers, in the area that I was here in '75, but they have their generation on it. They've had several generations in this area. And this went by them, and they're okay with it too, with these stipulations. So, thank everybody so much.
Ms. Callaway, I'd like to thank you, because I know you've put an awful lot of work and time and effort into this. And I appreciate your concern, not just for the environment and for the eagles out there, but overall, just for the area, and making sure development is done right, and helping the developer and county staff get to a point where they can come up with something that's going to be beneficial for everyone. And I want to thank you for that.
Thank you too. And I'm sorry, because of a community effort, and a developer effort and everything, so.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
We have, nobody else signed up? Is there anybody else who would like to speak? Yes, sir?
Frank Tricker, T R I C K E R, representing South Walton Community Council. I've got a few issues here I'd like to address, and make you aware, some concerns that we have. And primarily, the concern is for density. You know, it's the same discussion we've had before, where in this case, we're increasing density by 100 percent, from 54 homes to 108 homes. It's a big, big increase, and that has an impact on everybody in South Walton. It affects our traffic, stormwater, all of our infrastructure, which we're having a lot of trouble keeping up with. So, in general, we just don't favor projects that increase density. It's not, I don't think it's good policy. And the comp plan was put into place with those conservation residential requirements for a reason. They were, they were set up that way for a reason. A lot of thought and effort went into that, and I don't think it's right to just come along and say, okay, we're just going to forget about that, and we're just going to let people build a lot more homes that really belong there. And that gets me to my second point. The reason those properties are conservation residential is because of all the wetlands. So, if you have a home that's conservation residential, you're required to preserve 60 percent of the property in its natural state. And that's what keeps the wetlands healthy, because it's all, they all work together. And the, I think the proposal is to go to low-density residential. There's no requirement to preserve natural vegetation. You don't have to, you can clear cut the whole thing. And, you know, that, I think, there's a double whammy here. When you start doubling the density and increasing the impact on the environment, I just don't think it's good. I really don't. I mean, I understand that developers put a lot of work into this, make sure they've done a good job in designing a nice little area, but I just don't think it's good for South Walton. It's certainly not good for the environment in that specific area. So, I think those are things that really need to take into consideration when you make your decision. Okay, just a couple other points. One of the standards for approval is whether and the extent to which the proposed amendment adversely affects property values. Well, if you're going to increase property values, it can't help, I'm sorry, if you're going to increase density, it's not going to help property values in that area. And that's, I, I think that's just, I think that's self-evident. And the last thing here is whether the proposed amendment would be in conflict with the public interest. And to me, that's a big issue. That's, has to do with entitlements. The applicant is not entitled to a change in density. He's not entitled to a change in land use. The public is entitled to adherence with the comprehensive plan. That's what it was there for. People buy property, they invest, they do make a lot of decisions based on the land uses that are in the comprehensive plan. That's what they're there for.
Can I ask you a question real quick?
Yes, sir.
Do you believe that the comp plan and land development code have mechanisms built into them to allow for changes to be made?
Yes, of course.
Okay. So, if, if someone comes here or goes to BCC with a request to make a change, and their change meets the requirements of the LDC and the comp plan, does the proposal then meet the requirements of the LDC comp plan?
No.
No. So, you're saying no change should ever happen to anything?
No, I'm saying it doesn't make it right.
That's what I'm hearing.
It doesn't make it right.
Okay. Well, I appreciate your interest, and I appreciate your comments.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Would you all like to address any of those concerns?
Briefly, I believe Mr. Jenkins is going to address one issue. Yeah, just one thing I should point this out earlier. The way that this project is proposed, we worked with staff on this, and we actually have about 75 percent open space on this property once it's built out, because of conservation easements, the wetlands that are remaining in their natural state, setbacks, things like that. So, we're actually above that 60 percent that we're proposing CR2.1. I just wanted, wanted to point that out.
All right. I'll thank you for that, Joe. Anybody else wish to speak? If not, we'll vote public comments.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to echo that the planning department was very concerned about the elimination of the 60% preservation requirement and the existing land use proposed to be changed. And we worked with the applicant to ensure that the result of the change, if the board approved it, would still result in more preservation of open space than that category required and that we would be changing to a different category.
And that, that's kind of the point I was trying to make. I mean, just because you're making a change doesn't mean that it doesn't meet the requirements. I mean, that, that can, that can still happen.
In one of the circumstances, the comprehensive plan and land development code do speak directly to changing conditions. In this particular neighborhood, when conservation, 1.1, the two different conservation land use categories were placed on this parcel, there was no public sewer or public water in this neighborhood and those lot sizes were minimum lot sizes that could be developed without public water and public sewer. Public water and public sewer have now come to this neighborhood and that's a significant change.
Thank you, sir. All right. Public comments closed. Commissioners, what's your pleasure?
Uh, so I, sorry, we're gonna need separate motions on the three items.
There's three different items.
Yeah, and we should take the land use change first.
So we'll take item number seven of land use change.
Um, Mr. Chair, on the conservation easements, those are all, I just want to make sure, those go with the property? In other words, those, those can't be changed in the future? Those will be permanent easements?
Yes, sir. The conservation easements that are over the wetlands right now are already in control of the state and they're there for perpetuity. Conservation easement of 3.7 acres has not been recorded yet, but will be recorded and it will be for, run with the land and be for perpetuity also.
So the area to the left, that's, that's one that's gonna be in perpetuity?
Yes.
And then the one in the upper right-hand corner, how, how big is that?
Uh, this is probably only about 0.75 acres. They're, they're not proposing a conservation easement over this area, but they're just not proposing it in that area, which is part of the common space. I mean, it's just what the question.
Does that have restrictions on it already because of the eagle nests and stuff?
It only have building restrictions on it and you can only do certain things in the area. So this would have 660 feet of that.
Why, the cul-de-sac, it looks like there's a cul-de-sac comes in right below it. That's not inside of that same zone?
It, it does hit the edge of that 660 feet and it would have to abide by construction requirements for building within that area, which are limited in certain times in the year, have to do some monitoring and things like that. So they, they do fall within a small portion of that.
If I may ask, sir, the 660-foot buffer is not a zone of prohibition. There's still a lot of development. You just have certain time frames within which you can't develop the nesting season and certain other requirements to protect the nests. But you are still allowed to develop within that 660-foot area.
It is a silent limit, so you're.
All the other common areas, or I'm assuming the common areas where it looks like trees?
Those are wetlands.
I mean, to the, like, to the south is a huge.
Wetland area.
And then right down.
Mm-hmm. Those are all wetlanded because they're already in conservation easements.
So.
Will, will remain that way.
And the total area of conservation easements in the parcel?
Uh, there is probably somewhere in the neighborhood, I don't know exactly, but I think it's right around 26 acres maybe. Now, it will be a little more than that, so.
So, so the buildable area in that 74 acres is about 50?
Close, close.
And you're proposing 128 lots? So it's about three to one?
Somewhere of the other area.
Yeah.
Anything else, Commissioners? We're looking at item number six. Do we have a motion on land?
Mr. Chair, item seven.
Oh, I'm sorry, seven. Mine got crossed, I'm sorry.
So I'm making sure we have the right one?
Yeah, number seven.
What should we approve?
We have a motion on Mr. Roberts, second by?
Second.
Mr. Perry. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
No.
We have a motion carries with Mr. Glabow voting no on number seven. How about number eight? Conceptual P. Any questions for being let in here?
Probably I'd go ahead and formally introduce that one as a separate item.
Okay.
If we could, even though we.
We've already discussed it.
We continue to discuss it. Waterfalls by Bay Conceptual PUD, Mr. Request for Approval by Final Order. A project that was reviewed by Tim Brown. It's a major development order application requesting approval to develop 128 lot, single-family residential subdivision on approximately 72.54 acres with a future land use of conservation residential one to two and a half and a proposed future land use district of low-density residential replacing the conservation residential two to one parcel. And we requested the staff report be entered into that.
Accepted. Commissioners?
Um, I guess one of y'all can answer this. What's the public, should be a, a public benefit to a PUD? What's the public benefit to this?
I don't think this is a PUD, is it? What's the, what's the, uh, what's the?
PUD overlay.
Very good. Thank you very much. There's actually two public benefits. We're increasing the amount of open space beyond that which is required under the county's land use regulations. And the other thing that we added in the north, make sure I get my direction correct, northeast corner, we originally had two lots and we deleted those two lots and we're proposing a nature observation deck right near the bay, accessible by boat, kayak, canoe. It's not gonna be where you can drive to it and it would be a wonderful place to watch the eagles over the bay. And so that's gonna be a, a low-impact observation. Nature.
Okay. Um, is it, so this is gonna be, this deck is open to the public? If you can get to, if you can get to.
It will be open to the public. You can canoe, kayak, or jumbo, whatever you're gonna use and access the property, go up on the deck and, and watch the nature nearby, including the eagles. But that is open to the public.
Is that gonna be included in the documents, that that's open to the public?
Absolutely.
Any other questions on item number eight?
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners, what's your pleasure? You have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Open by Mr. Perry.
Second.
Taken by Mr. Harden. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
That one's unanimous. Number nine.
Thank you, Commissioners. I have number nine. It's the same development we've been discussing. This is Waterfalls by Bay PUD Overlay Ordinance, Request to Approve by Ordinance. It's been reviewed by Tim Brown. This ordinance would add section 2.06.06 to the Long County Land Development Code to adopt the Waterfalls by Bay Conceptual PUD and Master Plan as an overlay district, establishing a defined boundary, establishing regulatory conditions for the planning unit development, overlay and providing for the incorporation of the Waterfalls by Bay Conceptual PUD and Master Plan as a pending PDU dash forward to the Long County Land Development Code, providing percebability and an effective date. Essentially what this ordinance does, it creates an overlay district with the master plan that you just considered, which allows them to move their density around within their development site where it makes both best sense for both the developer and the environmental constraints of the site. The applicant may be able to answer some additional questions if you have some.
Any questions, Commissioners?
When you're saying you can move these around, explain that.
I guess that's staff report be entered into.
Yes, that's accepted.
Uh, I think what Mac is referring to is moving the densities around the parcel. I'll move the proposed lots. The proposed lots will say where the proposed lots are unless they make changes come back before you get that approved.
This allows that to be done.
This allows this to be done. That's correct. It's, it's moving density around along the parcel, just like it's shown here, basically. So it's not moving anything after this. It's, it's just planning.
Just, just want to make sure.
Yes.
What we're talking about, because that sounded like we were talking about we could move things around.
Well, what, what happens, it's a little complicated, because it has a split land use, you have to do a PUD overlay because you can only do certain things on certain land uses. So what this does is kind of blend those two together so that you can actually do this. So that's why we go through the process.
Any other questions? We have a motion.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion of second.
Second.
Motion of second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have a matter of number nine. Um, I've got about 6:17. We're gonna take a break and come back at 6:30.
It's only half a minute. Yes, mine's doing too bad. My getting.
Hey, Teddy. Somebody missed out on 16 and asked if he was about to end this one.
I'm gonna tell you, get up there. Tell him that. You don't quit losing height on blowwork. I'm trying to get it back up. Look, he's awesome. Excellent cut. I'm gonna go with, I don't want to bring it up. It's, 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 uh, 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 it's,
and then the Forest Service, Port Washington State Forest, to our west. It's a VMU parcel. And an important point to remember is it is a redevelopment of an existing developed parcel. This was the original site. Some of you old timers might remember it well. It used to be the collaborations of retail use many years ago. And in the interim, we had some retail uses with many storage warehouse located behind it to the north.
What year was that picture taken?
This was 2004, I believe.
Really?
I don't know about Mr. Barker, but I don't know if I might be called an old timer.
Look, I'm out there with you. So, you know, we're together. We're experienced.
I know we can both remember.
Yes.
The next slide shows the site as it exists today. I think Mac told you that there was a development called Courtyard at Seagrove, which was authorized for 33 single-family homes, 20 multi-family homes, about 10,000 square feet. It died during the Great Regression and went back to the bank. And my clients acquired it from the bank in 2013. What we decided, as we began to look at this site in a close-up, is that one of the greatest resources we had on the site was the fact that it was adjacent to the state forest. We are not a beachfront property. Our intention is not to be a beachfront, beach cellar property. So how do we orient ourselves? The orientation was natural. When we first talked to the Forest Service, who we've worked with for a couple of years, they said, "May we are looking for a venue to get to 38?" This is a great connection into the Eastern Lake Trail system. But we can't easily get people from that multi-use path or from 38 like we do off the 395 trailhead. So with that piece in place, we said, "Now what's next?" We decided that we needed to deal with traffic and transit issues. And as we looked at what was the best thing going, we looked at the most rational idea and decided we had to have something that would be forward-looking and get traffic, get auto traffic off of 38. So we looked at the 38, the Seaside Institute 38 Mobility Study that y'all are familiar with. We know they're a million dollars into the feasibility analysis of that study. So we threw ourselves headfirst and bought into this park and ride system that the 38 Mobility Study is advocating. And we'll show you a little more about that. Finally, we decided we needed a good partner. If we were gonna be in the rental business, we needed a good partner. And at this point, I can represent to you, we've been working with the St. Joe Company and their management company has a third leg of the stool to be our manager for the units that are gonna be rented on the site. So we feel like we've put together a great supporting cast. The design element actually comes from the Greenway Park neighborhood. The developer who we've worked with, the HOA board that we've worked with, set this neighborhood up around the idea of creating greenway entries, public greenway entries into the state forest at this point. So we began to build off of that greenway thing. We came up with the Greenway Station name and it's gone like wildfire since then. We've worked with the church. We've worked with the neighbors. We've worked with the Forestry Service. We've had, we've had 14 different meetings with different HOA boards, different interest groups to try and get this thing right. So I'm trying to tell you that this is not just us coming up with something that we think is a great idea. We think that the community thinks it's a great idea. It's a mixed use plan and what we're asking you to approve tonight is whether it's a good idea to have a mixed use plan that includes a lodge and condominium units that are oriented to ecotourism. We're not sure what the beach is gonna look like. And so we know that, but we do know the forest is gonna be there. And we think there's, in talking with the Walton County Tourist Development Council staff and looking through the comp plan, ecotourism is another untouched or barely touched segment. So we're able to orient the entire development in the direction of ecotourism. The other part that I told you about is that we're asking you to approve a transit-oriented development. And that means it's a development that's gonna depend on, in some good large part, with the operation of a tram system, the operation of the multi-use trail, operation of a bus system that Atkins Engineering is suggesting as a short term, that we'd be able to provide a activity hub where we attract transit-oriented users, more bicycles, more walkers, more tram users. As a part of that, we are asking for a reduction in the total number of parking spaces required on-site. And you'll see that as one of the reductions that we're asking for as a condition in exchange for the benefits of the pub. And finally, two small variances. We're looking at allowing a higher percentage of residential within this mixed use pub from 20% maximum to 24% maximum. In large part, that's a technical calculation because your, the mixed use pub says that you have a 20% residential maximum component. At this point, we're at a 24%. The other is also a front setback allowance of 10 feet. And what that allows, if you look on your drawing, that site plan drawing, along the front edge, the 38 edge of the property, you'll see what's called an arcade. That 10-foot allowance allows for that arcade, the posts of that arcade, to come back, come into that 25-foot setback. Doesn't, the buildings aren't moved forward, the ground level doesn't move forward. It's for, to allow for that pedestrian access, that covered walkway that runs the length of the project. Okay, let's move to the next picture. That picture in your booklet gives you an idea of what a 3D rendering and shows in terms of scale and compatibility with the neighborhood. That's one of the, one of the Greenway Park residents who has a home that's built directly adjacent to it said it, but we didn't quite catch them. But it's a pretty new photo, but we didn't get their house in yet. But you can see the vernacular, the architecture, the scale of the buildings. The highest thing we've got is a, is a, is three stories off the ground. The next pictures that you see is the 38 elevation. Again, trying very hard to stay within that, what they call, what architects call the 38 vernacular, very residential oriented, peaked roofs, heavy landscaping, mixed use residential over retail and restaurant. Our next picture. This is the arcade that I was referencing to you a minute ago. It's a covered, the covered walkway that makes for a more comfortable pedestrian experience and the reason for the setback, the 10-foot setback variance.
You don't have quite enough bicycles on 38 there.
We, I told them, put lots of bicycles and lots of walking people in all those pictures. The next is the, this is the roadway that you see in the center of the site plan, going back towards the entrance of the lodge. So on the left-hand side, you've got the condominium units over the retail. On the right-hand side, you've got that mixed office over retail. Next picture. This is a close-up of the interior entrance, the front door of the proposed lodge. All right, next one please. And next. So basically what this will give you the, give you the big picture on the tie-in with the state forest. For those of you not familiar with these trail systems, you can see the head of Eastern Lake. You can see the trails that come up from Cassine. You can see the trails that come over from the 395 entrance. It's this system that we're trying to get public, public access jamming for the Forestry Service with. Next picture. The way that we, we think we'll just supercharge it is that we have created or we'll propose to create a trailhead building, which is, serves two purposes. It's a building that'll be maintained in perpetuity by the Commercial Owners Association on our side of the property, but it'll be an entrance to the trail system off of 38. Directly to the west of it, you see a parking lot that is designed on the Forestry Service property to provide parking for the users that want to use, utilize the trail system. We've also worked with the Forestry Service to talk about improving short-loop trails that connect off of this trailhead and connect off of the parking lot. The idea is that when this park and ride, park and ride system comes into place, this transit system, and we do believe that it's gonna have, you'll basically be able to feed that trailhead from users of the multi-use trail, people off of 38, and people using the transit system with that transit hub. It creates an energy center that we think will feed our restaurants and feed our retail. It makes for a good relationship in the long run. We do have folks from the Forestry Service with us here tonight. Mike Mathis, who is the manager of the local Chipotle unit, has one of, been one of the primary contacts with us, with the Forestry Service. I can represent you, to you tonight that the Forestry Service folks have approved changes or potential changes to their management plan that would accommodate these plans up through their Tallahassee office level. But you know they're gonna wait until we're entitled before they take it front of the body. Okay, this is a close-up on that trail shop that I was, that I was telling you about. Part of what you see with the bicycles lined up is that that 38 Mobility Study provides for electric bike systems to be installed at each of these hubs along 38 to provide an opportunity to get off the tram, get on a bike, do the trail system, go to Rosemary, drop the bike off, get back on a tram, go back to your car. That's the vision of the mobility study. All right. And this just gives you an idea about the proximity of the trailhead to the rest of the buildings to the east. Now, for those of, for those of you who aren't familiar with the multimodal network plan out of that mobility study, they have these transit hubs that start all the way over to Greaton Beach and work their way all the way to 38 on the east end. A total of, I believe, 15 or 16. That connection, in that study, they put one of those hubs right here in this location where we've got it, on our piece of property. So once we saw that, we're like, okay, we think that we're supposed to do this. So we're fulfilling at least that portion of the mobility study for you. All right, next. That's it. I've got the whole team with me. We have a, what I'm calling the dream team. We've been working together for long enough, we've gotten to know each other real, real well. Dean Burgess has been providing civil engineering from the beginning. The developer, who else? The developer is Ricky Rookus, who I've been working with since Gulf, since Gulf Place, since the Gromaldi, since the Rosemary was the Gromaldi parcel. He's a local, he's been here forever, and he does quality work. And I'm proud to be associated with him. Next to him, we got Ashley Grant, who did the compatibility study for us. We got Cameron Hughes, who works with Walt Chancey Designs, who's also a partner in the development entity. We got my older brother Rick Hall, who's been doing the transportation and parking analysis for us. And then we got. We got Randy Gardner, who's been helping us with our planning side, doing the analysis of the compatibility issues in the neighborhood. We got some Forestry Service stand-up. Mike Mathis is on right now. He's the local manager. You guys. And now for questions. We got the team together to answer.
Parking. Would you know is the biggest, one of the biggest issues in 38? How many parking places do you have?
Total of 207, provided on-site. 14 provided on 38, for a total of 225. That, but as you guys know from your work, those right-of-way parking spaces do not count towards our total. The, and the story on our parking analysis is that we initially, or at least for the last couple of years, recognized the fact that when you have a mixed use like we do here, there's an effect both on the number of trips that go in and out, vehicle trips, and there's a effect on the number of parking spaces that are required based on the fact that you've got these uses that are complementary. We had utilized what you're familiar with, which was a internal capture analysis that we use on concurrency trip impact analysis as a indicator of what a reasonable reduction in the number of parking spaces would be. So we designed around that 26% reduction from the maximum parking spaces required by the Land Development Company.
How many parking spaces will you have designated, I guess, for the residential units and the hotel?
At this point, we, there are no plans to have any specific parking spaces designated exclusively for any particular use within the pub boundary. We've actually had a party that asked us if we would consider including that as a condition in the development. And it's something that we wouldn't have a problem with.
I'm just curious because you've got people living there and you've got people coming to stay there. When I get home from work, I want a place to park. And in the summertime, that might be a problem, especially during the summertime.
We, we thought about that from the marketing aspect. We thought about that from the operational aspect. And we feel comfortable with the mixing uses that we've got and the transit orientation that we've got, that we're gonna be okay.
I think you said the maximum height is around three stories, 30, 30 feet?
That, that's correct. But there are some peaked roofs on the front of that, that building just to the south of the lodge.
Was there, was there any consideration or thought given to, had a parking garage on the bottom floor?
No, we hadn't, Mr. Gladwell. The, because our ground level activity is so important in this mixed use context, you know, the retail and the restaurant feeds everything else that's going on on the ground. And we just didn't feel like we could lose that, you know, that much activity.
That's a. Service road?
Yes.
On the front of the property?
It is a, as we look down, you can look on your exhibit and see it a little more clearly, but it's a, it's a service road. Then the layer behind the service road is the parallel parking. Then the landscape buffer. The pedestrian arcade.
I'm taking most of the service road and the parallel parking and the buffers are in the right-of-way.
The buffers are not in the right-of-way. The edge of the pavement at the parallel parking is within the right-of-way. And the separation islands for the, for the service road are within the right-of-way. And what we talked about with public works and with planning is that we understand to be in the right-of-way, we need a right-of-way agreement with the county. Part of, and what the other thing that's in the right-of-way is the transit stop. We want to be able to use the transportation concurrency funds that, you know, proportion of fair share funds to be able to commit as the 38 Mobility Study progresses. This will be our first configuration, the service road with the parallel parking. But as that, as we get to the later stages of that 38 Mobility Study, we start expanding the roadway, including the dedicated transit lanes, building the kind of multipurpose paths they're talking about, we would, the right-of-way agreement would tie both us and the county down to making those improvements as they were required through the Mobility Study.
So maybe, this is more from Mr. Burgess, but is three, you identified three variances?
Yes.
But have, does those three variances increase density?
None of the requests.
None of the requested deviations will increase density or intensity allowed by the development.
Do you agree with that, Mike?
Sir. The, the other part of the parking is that when we're trying to attract users to these uses that are on their bikes, or that are on a transit, or on a walker, that reduce also, besides the interaction between the mixed uses onsite, that also reduces the number of parking spaces that are required to get everybody to and from the use. So, that's also a part of the reduction. The last piece, Mr. Chairman, on that parking, we did not take advantage of the 20% increase that a lot of uses do along 30A for having your parking behind the buildings. So, that's not a part of the calculations.
How about trips in and out? How difficult do you see that being for people turning into the project off of 30A or getting out of the project to 30A?
We'll leave that to the smart guy.
That must be you, Dean. I mean, because, and I'll be honest with you, I don't think it'll be a problem at all, because you lease a parking lot there in the summertime, they can just sneak right on out.
Well, either Rick or I could answer this, but that service road that we're providing will allow traffic, it essentially behaves as a deceleration and acceleration lane onto 30A. So, it'll get people off of 30A and then into our development, in my opinion, more efficiently. They'll be able to figure out where they want to go once they're off 30A and in that little service road. So, I think access to the development, that service road serves a number of different purposes, both for the transit system as well as getting people on and off.
Does the service road extend all the way to the entrance to Greenway Park, the church?
It extends to just west of the entrance of Greenway Park, so it's pretty much the full frontage of our property.
So, theoretically, say I wanted to go to the restaurant in this new development, and I live in Greenway Park, I could theoretically drive to, without getting on 30A.
We'd certainly hope you'd walk.
You know, by the bicycle. Let's say I'm 75, eight years old, and I don't walk too well. Some days I don't walk till 56, but...
You would be, you would have to make a short jaunt onto 30A and into, into the service road.
And actually, that's our original design, hooked it up right into that entrance, because we have an easement through that Greenway Park entrance runway. Part of what the church asked, and part of what Greenway Park Owners Association, or at least Ben Hammond on behalf of the owners, asked us to separate those two, so that we have both a sightline difference and that we wouldn't interfere with the entrance and exit of their, of the people that are in that neighborhood. The other thing that we did in relation to parking, Mr. Chairman, was that lane that goes up into, right adjacent to the Greenway Park neighborhood, we originally had 30 parking spaces up in that lane, and as part of our work with the Greenway Park owners, we determined that that would be the stormwater, a green space, stormwater, and also in addition to the Greenway easement area up in the forest, and we took those parking spaces out. So, that was a large concession and made us a little closer on those parking numbers.
How, how close is this project to the Coastal Doom Lake Protections Zone?
I don't know. We're far enough that I don't know that we've made that calculation.
We're outside of the 300-foot Coastal Doom Lake Protections Zone.
Yeah, the closest, the closest tributary would be up where that, was that site, the water? Yeah, just northeast of the property is the headwaters of Eastern Light, and that would be as close as we can get.
But it's a lot more than 300.
Yeah, that's, you know, that's one of the things about the site, if you're in a redevelopment site, we haven't had to deal with any environmental issues that are, you know, on the existing site. We're working hard with preserving stuff instead of...
Okay. Well, I'm interested to hear some public comments, if we had any. We got several letters, I was going to say we got several letters of support handed to us tonight, so. We go ahead and have public comments. Melissa Ward?
Thank you. Good evening, Melissa Ward for Dunlap &amp; Chipman. Dunlap &amp; Chipman represents the Summers Edge community association.
Where's Summers Edge?
I'm sorry?
Where's Summers Edge on the map?
It's just south of there.
South of it, okay.
So, first, let me say that we, the development is a nice development, and there's no complaint about their general uses. The reduction from the original application of 75-unit hotel to a room, or rather to 50, was much appreciated, and the change from angled parking to parallel parking along 30A, should they get a right-of-way agreement, is much appreciated. The actual comments that we have are more of a technical nature. While the association has asked that we put on the record that they don't really, they would really not see any type of deviations from the code, that's, that's their most strong point, that we would like to talk about what those deviations are and exactly how they may or may not be applicable. The first is looking at their parking, for instance. We know and we appreciate that they are working on a parking analysis. The code specifically requires, and the comp plan specifically requires, that if you're going to have any type of parking deviation or a shared parking agreement of any kind, that you have something in writing. So, we would suggest that that be a condition, whether it is of your recommendations of the board, that they have, because you're right, somebody wants to come home, they want to be able to park in their spot, and somebody has a retail business that shuts down at 5:00 and a restaurant that's open until 10:00, there may be an opportunity for a shared parking analysis that shows that they could share the spaces. We do not disagree with the transportation analysis of internal capture of some of those trips, but trips are not how you count parking spaces. The code specifies that parking spaces are counted by the size of your development, by square footage for non-residential, and by the number of rooms for residential. So, based on that, the deviation would be a methodology deviation, not a number of parking spaces, in our opinion. That's irrelevant as long as they get the actual parking analysis and get that approved. We would recommend that your parking deviation be conditional, that you don't just arbitrarily give them a leeway not to have 68 parking spaces, but instead give them the opportunity to show that they don't have to have those 68 parking spaces, or any number that they don't have to have, through true parking analysis and presenting. And they have, the county has a fabulous staff, they can review that information and recommend approval of that parking analysis as it's required by code. The, the second deviation we'd like to talk about, first, let me say, the first deviation is about front setback, and we do not have any argument about their front setback, as is a common plan in principle, to bring those walkable spaces closer to the roadway in order to have a more cohesive development that engages people in the community. So, that's not one of our complaints. The second deviation that we'd like to discuss is their methodology on their PUD. The PUD, let me back up and say, the comprehensive plan policy, L-1.5.1, specifies how you calculate residential density versus non-residential intensity. Non-residential intensity is based on floor area space, based on your acreage, based on your land use category. So, if you have an acre and you're allowed to develop at 100% for floor area space, your non-residential is allowed to have 43,560 square feet of non-residential. It's a very simple math. And for residential, your calculations, according to that policy, is based on the acreage times the amount of allowable density. So, again, using the one acre, you have one acre, at BMU, it's 12 units, you're allowed to have 12 units. It's very simple. Now, we take that and we translate it to what you can do in a PUD. And a PUD specifies in the Land Development Code under Section 20601B, B1 and B2, that you can have two different types of PUD, a residential PUD and a non-residential PUD, a mixed-use PUD. Your residential PUD says you can have 15% non-residential, 20% minimum open space, and the rest of it can be residential. So, that leaves you with 65% of residential. That's a big number, but this is a small piece of property. So, at 4.89 acres, you'd still be allowed to have 38 units and still do your commercial. However, they chose to use a mixed-use PUD. That mixed-use PUD is where they're asking for the deviation. Their, their, the mixed-use PUD language specifies that you can have 20% residential and 20% open space minimum. Again, using simple math, 20% of nearly five acres is about an acre, that's 12 units. They're doing 35. They're suggesting that they're basing their residential capacity on floor area ratio as a percentage of their overall floor area ratio. There is no place in the comp plan or the land development code where you can convert residential density to floor area ratio. It is not allowed. So, your 25% that they're asking for over the 20% that they're getting would not increase their density to 35. 35 is about 60% of the site, based on calculations. Five acres, 60%, three acres, 38, 36 units. It's not that we are asking them not to do it or to reduce any of their numbers, it's that we're asking them to switch from a mixed-use PUD to a residential PUD, and they can work out the numbers. At a minimum, or I would say maybe a maximum, it would increase their non-residential percentage from 15% to 17% and still be able to keep everything that they're doing. But it is the legal and right way for them to adopt this PUD. To change it to a mixed use and ask for a 25% deviation, or a deviation to 25%, doesn't meet their need, it's a miscalculation, and it opens the door for other PUDs to try to use a floor area ratio calculation for the residential, and it's inappropriate, is our opinion. We would like to see that any final order coming from this board or going to, or from the Board of Commissioners would include those particular items. Ask them to change it to a residential PUD and meet their own criteria, redo, change their parking deviation if there has to be one, that it be conditional, that they can meet it with a parking analysis, and that they include a shared parking agreement between the uses within that PUD as required by code. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Randy Gardner.
Off hundred.
Fred Ficker.
I'm representing South Walton Community Council, and I'm here to express our support for this project. We have been following this for a period of time, and there's a lot of aspects to it that we really like. We really like the tie-in with the state forest, I think that's really, really good for the area. We like the tie-in with the 30A mobility people, that's really good. It's a nice mixed-use development. And somebody talked earlier about the purpose of a PUD. Well, a PUD is supposed to demonstrate public benefit. So, if there was a project to come along to demonstrate public benefit, I think this would be it. We have looked at the variances, or at least we understand the variances, and we think they're reasonable. And I guess what I really appreciate is the process that these folks have gone through. They didn't just meet with neighbors and groups and with us, but they collaborated with them, I believe, and the issues that we raised, you know, they were very good about working with us to, I tried to accommodate what we were looking for, so we just appreciate that very much. We think it's the right way to go a project, so.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
We've had nobody else who signed up to speak. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak at this time? As soon as we close public comments, would you all like to?
I'd like to go ahead and respond to Melissa Ward's comments. First of all, we didn't have any issue with submitting a traffic, our traffic report that includes parking. Basically, our traffic report outlined the internal capture rates, and then we utilized those internal capture rates for our parking reduction. We'll take it a step further and dovetail that traffic report into a parking report, and we'll agree to, to that condition. The 15-foot setback, I think she would, we were all on the same page with that, we're asking for a 10-foot deviation, we provide a 15-foot setback. The last item was the PUD, whether we're residential or commercial. We met with staff to discuss how will we base, because the code, Chapter 2 of the code does not outline a methodology for when you're analyzing a mixed-use PUD versus residential PUD, those percentages, how are they calculated? Now, I do agree that whenever you're calculating your density and intensity, the comp plan does outline, and we did appropriately utilize acreages to justify our density and to justify our intensity. For the PUD usage, a lot of those acreages, let's say your residential acreage, that includes, that would include parking. And whenever you're looking at the use of a PUD, is it the buildings or is it the landmass that you want to evaluate? In discussing it with staff, it was agreed that we would want to look at square footage, how much square footage of your building area does your residential occupy, and how much square footage of your building area does your commercial occupy, and come up with the percentages based on that, which is what we did. And from a square footage standpoint, we're at 24.1%, I believe, of residential, and that's why we asked for the deviation. I agree with Melissa, it's academic, we could say we're a residential PUD and our acreages are, we comply with that methodology. But I think if you look at this PUD on its face and say, does it look like a mixed-use PUD, or does it look like a residential PUD? It looks like a mixed-use PUD, because your eye focus is on buildings. Cars are cars, your eyes focus on what are the buildings being used for. So, that's, that's how we came about it with our methodology, and if we wanted to elaborate, we can go ahead and ask questions of me or staff.
Is there, is there any, is there any drawback to changing from mixed-use to residential?
At this point, it's a good question, Mr. Gladwell, and as Chairman, I think we're all clear that it's not a substantive change. It's a technical analysis, which way fits closer to what's in the code. I spoke with Mac, and I've spoken with Melissa, and we respect her, and we want to, we want to make sure that they're comfortable. So, we'd be glad to move forward with a condition that says, prior to coming in, either prior to going to BOCC or prior to coming back in with a detailed plan, we'd be glad to do, to figure out which one of these technical analysis benefits will, whether it should be treated as a residential or a commercial variation, or a commercial with a residential. It doesn't change what we're asking for.
So, it doesn't have a substantive change on the plan, it's just a matter of what you call it?
They're not concerned about the numbers, it's just this particular small piece of the analysis.
I just want to make sure, are clear, on the front setback, the part, part of the building walls are within the normal setbacks. The, what extends, what you're asking basically for a deviation or a variance, whereas for the arcade or the cover, is that a fair statement?
On, on the ground floor, the, the building faces are, all meet the full 20. twenty-five foot setback. Above that, there's one building that, on the west side, that the upper level will be even with the arcade. But on the ground floor, we meet, other than the, outside of the arcade, we meet all the front setbacks.
Anybody else have any questions? Mac, you want to? Clear the middle bit as far as this PUD and what it's called and what we should do?
I respectfully, I have great respect for Melissa Ward, I respectfully disagree with her analysis. However, working with the developer, uh, and sitting down with Melissa and myself, we can work through this technical issue. It will not change the project one bit.
Right. So we could approve it with a condition of what?
That we resolve the technical question as to whether this is a mixed-use PUD or a residential PUD and the appropriate request for the devi, the percentages of deviation.
Okay.
Um, I know we closed public comments, but I meant to ask them to start with the guys' their, their opinion before we, without closing.
You can comment.
We'll, since he's wearing a green uniform. We usually don't make it sexist, people wearing blue, but you're wearing green.
We, we were agreeing, we usually don't like to talk in public either, so.
It's basically, it's like Mr. Hall said, about two years ago, they approached us about this development concept. Point Washington is about seventeen thousand acres, but we have a forty-acre piece that almost, almost touches thirty-eight. I think it's about fifteen feet or ten feet or something like that, but, um, we've always looked for more, more recreational opportunities on our forest, um, just because of the development that's going on here and more and more people coming in, we recognize the importance of our state forest recreational lots. So this, this concept kind of helps us, um, get more people from thirty-eight onto our trail system to where they can bike and hike and basically go through the whole forest. We're going to connect everything, but, um, you know, it's just a good opportunity to, to basically increase our recreational opportunities on the forest.
Very good. Thank you.
Awesome.
Commissioners, anything else? Any other questions, concerns, comments?
Uh, I think, uh, Mr. Hall and Mr. Burgess should be commended for trying to, uh, redevelop a piece of property and do, do, uh, things that are going to help the neighborhood. I like the part of that forest, I think, uh, going forward, uh, that's a valuable piece to, uh, the future of thirty-eight. And I really like the train, the, uh, the attention to, uh, future, uh, transportation uses. Uh, and I think they'd be commended for attempting to, uh, do that, and, um, I understand Melissa, Ms. Ward's point, uh, I made the motion to approve with the condition that, uh, planning and the developers, uh, workout, want to call it, and, uh, thank you for their turn.
About the parking study too?
Uh, I had the park, to do the parking study, but it was mentioned.
Let's not heap too much praise on Mr. Burgess. He will give the board. Um, we have a motion on the floor with the conditions. We have a second.
Second.
We have a motion, and we have a second. Mr. Harden, second, and Mr. Gladwell made the motion. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. That is on, do we have more than one on this?
Yeah, we got to do one on two.
Thank you, Commissioners. We do have a companion project, uh, this is item number eleven, the Greenway Station conceptual PUD overlay ordinance, uh, exact as the same request as we had on number nine for the previous project. What this will accomplish, or allow the developer to do, is to mix his entitlements and move them around on the side as he's proposed. Uh, there are two land uses, um, and the development substantially is occurring in only one of those land uses.
Mr. Holden, first. Well, we've heard everything, I mean, it's just a matter of the motion, uh, on, on this item.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion, a second, all in favor, say aye.
Could we ask the staff to vote?
That's course accepted, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioners. Uh, the next section of the agenda is quasi-judicial.
Okay. Anyone who anticipates testifying on any of the remaining items, if you would, stand and raise your right hand to be sworn in. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony will provide to this board will be the truth? Uh, when you come forward, if you would, just state your name and state that you've been sworn in.
Mac Carter from the planning department. Item number twelve, the Seaside School Expansion. This is a request to approve by a final order. Uh, it's a major development submitted by Emerald Coast Associates on behalf of the Seaside School Foundation, and I'll ask Renee Bradley to introduce this request.
Emerald Coast Associates, um, on behalf of Seaside School Foundation's requesting approval to construct fourteen thousand two hundred fifty-five square feet school buildings on approximately two point zero nine acres with future land use of residential preservation. This land use is civic, pro the master town center of Seaside. Uh, the project's located at the intersection of West Ruskin Street, the Smolien Circle, and Seaside, identified by the parcel numbers in your package. Staff does have a couple of conditions that they are requesting. We are still, uh, lacking some architectural plans that show the height to the peak of the spile in one of the buildings, and I believe we'll have that by the time we get to the Board of County Commissioners. Uh, you recently had a handout this afternoon from the SARC where the, uh, Seaside Architectural Review Committee has finally, um, reviewed this and approved it. Uh, second, um, that was the, the one thing that we were waiting on, so number two will go away, other than the height, like I said, for the architectural plans. And, uh, number three, staff has requested a condition that in, uh, before we do some type of final C on this project, that they flat the area of the school. We have several parcels out there that have been cut in the past, and we've never gotten it flat on those properties. So I think this will be a good opportunity for us to get that cleaned up. Other than that, staff has no other outstanding issues with the project, and I'd be glad to answer any questions to the board.
Commissioners, any questions to the staff? Mr. Burgess?
Good evening, members of the board. Dean Burgess with Emerald Coast Associates, E U R G I S is the last name, and I have been sworn. I appreciate Ms. Bradley's introduction to the project. We do agree to the conditions, uh, that she stipulated. Uh, I feel that we'll, the, the spire height is something we can get from the architect. I think he was relying on the SARC review to alleviate that comment, um, but the county also needs to know that, so they can have it in there for it. Basically, this is, uh, as far as the location of this project, to familiarize yourself, this is, uh, within Seaside, we call this the Lyceum. The main amphitheater area is down here, kind of southeast of it, thirty-eighth, towards the south. This area has always kind of been earmarked for the Seaside School, and, uh, this basically is their full build-out plan for that Lyceum area. Uh, consists of six buildings, fourteen thousand two hundred fifty-five square feet, um, which will include, uh, classrooms and, uh, as well as interactive learning areas. If there's any questions, uh, specific to the plan or the concept, I'd be happy to reply to the board.
Any questions, Commissioners?
This, that's the area where they used to have concerts, or I guess they still do?
Uh, no, it, it looks a lot like the amphitheater area, uh, the, the large amphitheater right along thirty-eight where they had their concerts. This is the school, and they have smaller, um, performances on, on the stage, usually related to this.
So the stage is on stage, yes?
Yes, actually, uh, there was a minor development over that, that increased that stage and enhanced from what it currently is, but it will remain a stage.
Okay. Anything else? Thank you, sir. We'll go ahead and open public comments. We didn't have anybody sign up to speak. Is there anybody who wishes to speak? If there's none, we'll close the public comments. Commissioners, what's your pleasure?
Motion to approve.
Mr. Roberts?
Second.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number thirteen.
Hey, Sidney.
Want to take a break?
No, 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 no. On sixteen, I'm going to have to recuse myself again, because the code's there.
Oh, which one?
Sixteen. I just wanted to go ahead and get the paper. Sixteen. I just wanted to make sure.
Uh, I was paying attention.
Mr. Chairman, who was the second on that?
John.
Yeah. Mr. Barker.
Barker.
Yours on you.
Thank you, sir. The next item is number thirteen, the Blake Miramar Beach, formerly known as Miramar Beach Senior Living. This is a request to approve a final order, it's been reviewed by Tim Brown, um, and I'll ask, I'll ask Tim, he's not here. It's been submitted by the De Plantis Design Group on behalf of First Citizens Bank and Trust, requesting approval to develop a one hundred and fifteen thousand square foot assisted living and memory care facility with associated improvements on approximately ten point six one acres, with a future land use of coastal center mixed use. The project's located on the northeast corner of Posse Leon Street and US Highway ninety-eight West, and is identified by the parcel number in your package. We'd like to request the staff report be entered into evidence, and the applicant is prepared to present their case.
Staff report's accepted. Yes, sir.
Andy Yarborough with Blake Management Group, and I've been sworn in. Blake Management Group, we're an owner-operator of nineteen seniors housing communities throughout the southeast and mid-Atlantic. Here on behalf of the Blake Miramar Beach tonight, which, as Mac stated, is a hundred and fifteen thousand square foot, two-story assisted living and Alzheimer's care community, consisting of seventy-seven assisted living residences and forty-eight memory care residences. Um, we've got several members of our group here tonight, uh, my partner, Clint Barclay from our development team, Brad Griggs with sixty, Brad Israel with Sixty-eight Ventures, Steve Griggs with Legendary. We've got a member of our contracting team, Joe Yarborough. Yarborough with EBM Group. Our architect, Michael Fitz with Arrive Architecture. The vest of Orlando with De Plantis Design Group. Uh, we have a really brief video that I'd like to show, just a two-minute video that introduces the project, a little bit about our company. of the building, the architectural site plan, overall floor plans, interior courtyard renderings. For the next one. Also have the watercolor rendering of the project up here on the easel. But, um, really, we can just open it up to the team for any technical questions after public comments, but, uh, we have our DRB approval about thirty days ago, and here tonight just ask for your support. Thank you.
How many, I guess, how many rooms, I, I must have missed, I, I know you said, and I just didn't...
It's a, a total of one hundred and twenty-five apartments, seventy-seven of which are licensed assisted living units, forty-eight of which are memory care units.
Who is the memory care unit?
An Alzheimer's unit?
Yes, sir. It's in a separate, secure wing of the building for people with Alzheimer's or other forms of dementia.
Very good. That's some, certainly something that's needed.
That's right. Yes, sir. We've got a couple of different third-party feasibility studies that show significant unmet demand.
Not a lot of them here.
Pleasant to hear.
Okay. Anybody have any questions of the developer right now? Okay, thank you. We'll open up public comments. Uh, we didn't have anybody sign up. Is there anybody who wishes to address this item? If there's none, we'll close, close the public hearing. Commissioners?
Second.
Mr. Gladwell, second, and Mr. Roberts, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We're going to take about ten minutes. Yep. We're going to do that.
I think we will.
Now, now that Lee said it's going to happen.
I'm going to stand up and stretch.
Yeah. Yeah.
Time to take a break downstairs.
Yeah.
Sorry.
I just keep showing up.
Ah!
Uh, the next item on our agenda tonight is the Forestview Village Apartments, a request to approve a final order. It's been viewed by Tim Brown. Uh, it's a major development application, uh, submitted on behalf of Cypress Brook Company, requesting approval to develop a two hundred and eighty-three unit apartment complex on plus or minus thirteen point one acres, with a future land use of general commercial. Project located on the east side of MC Davis Boulevard, north of US Highway ninety-eight East, and identified by the parcel number in your package. Uh, you may recognize this as part of the, uh, mixed-use PUD that is located immediately east of the new elementary school and immediately south of the new sports park on Highway ninety-eight in the Peach Creek area. Uh, we request the staff report be introduced into evidence.
Accepted.
And the applicant is here to present their case.
Thank you, Mac. Good evening, Commissioners. I'm David Smith with Interlight Engineering, and I'm representing the applicant. I'm also here with Charles Redden, the owner, and Jeff Postnatal of Cypress Brook. We're before you this evening, uh, to discuss Forestview Village Apartments, and the Forestview Village is an approved planned unit development that was originally approved back in two thousand and five, and was amended in two thousand and fifteen, and then amended again at the beginning of this year in January. And it was approved with a variety of uses, with one of the uses being a two hundred and eighty-three unit apartment complex. And this is the approved Forestview Village site plan of the PUD, and the apartment complex is in this area here in Wood, which is on the northern side of the property. And, uh, before you see me, Forestview Village is a technical development order scheduled for that phase of the planned unit development that's currently approved. So this is the proposed site plan for Forestview Village, which has two entrance connections, or driveway connections to the East Danes Boulevard, and you enter into the property, and it's two hundred and eighty-three units and, uh, several different buildings integrated throughout the, uh, property here. There's drive aisles, parking aisles, and then we have wet detention facility. So that's the general overview of the project, and I would be more than happy to answer any questions that you all may have.
That's, I like that. I like that short, sweet. Anybody have any questions of the applicant? I bet that thing's full before you get it built.
Are we upset?
Where it's, where it's at. Great location.
Do you have any idea what the price range is?
I, I don't know at this stage, no, sir.
Are y'all going to, is one company going to hold all these, or is it, are you, how you going?
My understanding is one company that will, that will.
Any other questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
We'll open the public hearing. We had nobody sign up, is there anybody who wishes to speak? We'll close the public hearing. Commissioners, what's your pleasure? Commissioners, what's your pleasure?
Motion approved.
Motion by Mr. Perry, second by Mr. Roberts. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. That's the easiest one you'll ever get here.
Thank you, Commissioners. And this brings us to item number fifteen on our agenda, the Palm Court subdivision. This is a request to approve a final order. It's been reviewed by Bob Baranti. It's a major development order application submitted by O'Connell Associates and the engineers on behalf of SAP Investments, requesting approval to develop a five-lot, single-family subdivision on approximately 1.23 acres for the future land use of neighborhood infill. Project's located on Walton Magnolia Lane, near the very southeast corner of Walton County in Inlet Beach. This project has been to the Board of Adjustment and received a variance from the stormwater requirements and land development code to be allowed to present an alternative stormwater system for this very uniquely located lot. We'd like to request the staff report be entered into evidence.
Staff report's accepted. Who'd they get that variance from?
The zoning board of justice. And the applicant is here to present their case.
Commissioners, my name's John Nash, O'Connell Associates. We are the engineers for this project and the agents. As Mr. Carpenter said, this project's called Palm Court Subdivision. It's located on a 1.23-acre parcel on the west, excuse me, on the east end of Walton Magnolia Drive, as shown on the cover sheet of our plans and above here. Existing conditions of our plan is shown on Sheet Two. Shows that the site's undeveloped, has a single-family homes to the north, townhomes to the east, and vacant parcels to the west and the south, which are part of the approved development that is proposed to consist of single-family homes. Sheet Two also shows that the north portion of the site is located within FEMA flood zone X, and the south portion is located in FEMA flood zone VE11. Parcel is a Walton County future land use designation in neighborhood infill. Inlet Beach neighborhood plan designates the parcels residential with a maximum density of eight units per acre. As you can see from preliminary plat and the site plan, the owner's proposing a five-lot residential subdivision. Due to site conditions and because portions of the property are seaward of the coastal construction control line, the homes are proposed to be pier-supported, with parking on the ground level and finished floors above. Each lot is required to provide on-site parking spaces in accordance with the Walton County Land Development Code. Parking pads for each lot are shown on the site plan. It consists of five 20-by-40-foot parking pads. Site plan includes a five-foot sidewalk along Walton Magnolia Lane, as required by the Walton County Land Development Code. Now we're getting to the meat of this. In your packet in Sheet Six shows the existing site grades along with proposed drainage improvements. It shows that the site elevation's currently arranged from elevation six to elevation seventeen. We are proposing to reduce the overall site elevations to address a unique site condition that Mr. Carpenter mentioned. As indicated in the PC report in your packet, the owner requested us grant a variance proportions of the stormwater section of the LDC. To explain the variance request, we have brought a condensed version of our presentation we presented to the zoning board of adjustments. I tend to try to explain it quickly without spending too much of my time. Sheet seven, just so I can get through the plan real quick. Sheet seven's utility plan. All utilities here are start by Inlet Beach Water System and according to the Land Development Code. Sheet eight's landscape plan is shown, and it meets the requirements of the Land Development Code. There's a perimeter buffer around the project that meets the anti-requirements. Your packet also includes a survey and road profile. In addition to these items, the owner submitted several things, application, environmental assessment, compatibility analysis, traffic study, toxic policy, proof of ownership, and other documents. So with that, I will get into explaining what the variance request was and why we needed it. In fact, I have Joe White, I have copies of this, twenty-five slide presentation, to sort of explain our situation. We're in the east side, very end of Western Magnolia Lane. Western Magnolia Lane is in Inlet Beach. On the beach, this property is not actually beachfront. There's a proposed development that wraps around it, but it's just off the beach. And in that area, we got this project, and we started looking at due diligence and various items in terms of how to develop the site. When we received information, we reviewed the future land use, looked at the neighborhood infill, is allowed to have eight units per acre. We looked at the national wetlands inventory map, the environmental assessment, no wetlands on site, everything checked out there. We removed, reviewed FEMA flood map. There's, like I said, zone X on the north side of the property and a zone VE11 on the south side of the property. VE11 reduces density in this situation. Flood zone X is not reduced density at all. Viewed the survey, reviewed utility, everything seemed to check out. So, in November of last year, we developed a preliminary site plan. Preliminary site plan was in accordance with Land Development Code. For a site like this, that's fairly low, the only real option is to fill it because groundwater's relatively low, or relatively flush to grade. So we proposed to fill it several feet in order to provide exfiltration in common areas. You can see on the slide here, the common areas and the green areas. So with that, we would provide exfiltration over those common areas, direct our stormwater into those common areas, and percolate it into the ground. The LDC allows fill in this particular situation. It essentially requires it. However, when we had our community meeting, and when we reached out to some of the public and sent out our letters for community meeting, we received information and images of flooding issues that are in that area, particularly in the 2013, 2014 flood, rainfall events. That area had a significant amount of water on that parcel, in that entire area down in there. The problem comes that that area is flood zone X, and we understand that it's flood zone X, but did all our due diligence, showed it's flood zone X, but now we acknowledge that it does flood. During the 2013, or specifically 2014 event, county staff was on-site pumping the ponds just to the west of here, several hundred feet to the west, because of all the water that's standing in that area. Because of this, the problem is our site is at the lowest point in that area. It's that side and the site to the west. And essentially, we're at the bottom of the closed basin. We're not flood zone, but our site provides flood storage when that area floods. So filling the site was determined to be a bad idea. So with that, we met with county planning staff, we met with county, other kind of public works, we met with county's consultants, worked through some alternate options, and the alternate option that we came up with required a variance. We went to the variance board on April 26 and received that variance and presented a much longer document with that, but here's the short story. Short story is that we're proposing five lots, just like we were before. The main difference here is that we are proposing to remove approximately, I forgot the, 18,000 cubic feet of soil from the site, hauling off, thereby increasing the flood storage area on the site. Essentially, what we're doing is up front near the Walton Magnolia Lane, we're hauling offsite, making it lower there, building up some parking pads that are shown under these buildings here, and building the buildings up higher on the second level. With that, what we're doing is we're proposing previous pavement throughout the site. Previous pavement's been used several times in South Walton. Some people have arguments whether it's a good idea or a bad idea. In this particular case, I think it's a great idea. It's a small development. It can be controlled. It can be maintained. We've given information that there will be maintenance requirements that's built into the covenant restrictions of this development for previous pavement. But essentially, what we're proposing is to spread all the stormwater over the site, on the parking pads, on the green areas, and let it percolate into the ground. The existing grade out there, the existing site meets and exceeds the 100-year requirements that Walton County requires. What we did not meet, that we need the variance from, was Walton County requires that stormwater has to be in the common area. It also requires you can't have it under a house. Well, that's not possible here without filling the site. So with that, we approached the county with our idea. We all, as far as I know, agree that it's the most responsible thing to do in this area in order to develop the site that's still remaining or keeping the flood, keeping or increasing the flood storage area in this area. With this project, we dealt with many neighbors down there. We dealt with Inlet Beach Neighbor Association. We've explained the problem. People seem to understand. They have overwhelmingly seem to just say, "Don't make the flooding worse." We all know it's flooding, and you can't do anything about it, and don't make it worse." And that's what we are proposing to do here, although we believe so.
How are you doing that? Explain that to me.
So what we're doing is we're, if you look on this slide right here, there's a wall that's underneath the buildings that's just holding up dirt. And we are reducing, in that area of the wall on the south side of the property, that portion of the property is up around elevation between 12 and 17. But where the cars are parking, we've put a wall there, and we've reduced that area down to elevation seven. And we're proposing to remove the soil in order to bring the elevation down to elevation seven, where it can be brought down to. Other portions of the front of the parcel are being brought down lower than that, but all of the parking areas are at elevation seven. And so by removing that amount of soil, we are, in effect, adding 135,000 gallons of flood storage that's on the site.
If there's a car on that pad, is that going to flood?
A car on that pad, if they have a similar flood event to what they had in 2014, which we have been given evidence of similar to 100-year flood event, a car sitting on that pad will have some water. We've looked at information from pictures, and we've gone out and actually surveyed that road, and with evidence from those pictures, we estimated that the flood elevation during those events got up to elevation eight. So in that situation, a car may have a foot of water around it. We realize it's not an ideal situation, but in this situation, we think it's the most responsible thing to do. We could have raised the site.
I understand. You could have filled.
We could have filled the site. We could have met the LDC requirement, but we would have made flooding worse on the neighbors by doing that.
I understand. My question is, how are you going to sell these?
Well, as part of the variance request, we've stipulated that the covenant restrictions, as well as the plat, are going to have information telling the owners that this is a flooding area, that it floods there. It's on the county's area of concern for stormwater. That's one of the reasons we designed it to 100-year storm is required to do that. And the preliminary firm map that's going to come out is going to indicate a flood area in that area whenever it's adopted.
What elevation is the floor of the homes going to be?
The homes are proposed to be between, at minimum, 12, but the ones on the beach side are up at 15 minimum. In reality, they may have to be a little bit higher than that. Basically, the parking areas at elevation seven, they're going to be able to fit, you know.
Tell them to park across the street. It'll rain a bunch, right?
Well, everyone in that area, when it rains a bunch, has to go somewhere else because water, when it rains, I mean, we've had two events in 13 and 14 that were really bad events. Prior to that, we don't know exactly what's happened down there. We have received some information that showed that some portion of the area flooded in the seventies. But it's a situation down there where there's not an easy answer. The county studied the area. They have gotten some recommendations that aren't possible. They're not realistic. They can't happen. There's no real option because the fact of the matter is, it's low, and there's a boom between there and the Gulf.
Well, I don't think what you're planning is, I think as long as there's a whole lot of disclosure.
Well, and that's what we, as part of the variance request, that was made perfectly clear.
Yeah, that would be.
And as an engineer myself, I would like a lot of disclosure.
Yeah, yeah. We don't want, and we don't want to come back to the county with, you know, raising Cain about flooding problems.
Absolutely. The owner's fully aware, and he is ready and willing to do whatever makes everybody happy in order to disclose that.
Anybody else have any questions for the developer? Thank you. Open up public comments. Anybody? We had nobody sign up. Anybody like to address this item? Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. My name is Tamara Rakoba, and I am a property owner immediately to the east.
Please warn in.
I was not. To the zoning commission, but not to y'all.
Just reaching a hand. Do you swear or affirm the testimony or advice or the assurance? Thank you.
Okay. I'm a property owner immediately to the east of this track that we're talking about here tonight, and I also attended the zoning variance public meeting where this issue came into play. I'm here tonight because the unique nature of the plan that the developer has come up with for handling stormwater and stormwater management, to my way of thinking and to the way of thinking of many of my neighbors, has never really been proven to be an efficacious way to handle this stormwater. There's already a stormwater problem in that area. The track that we're talking about is basically a natural basin, and it controls the stormwater. I'm immediately to the east, and I don't flood, even when the flooding is egregious in the area. The road, Walton Magnolia Lane, is a very narrow two-lane road. It comes in a dead end right at Camp Helen Park. It's the only ingress in and out. People that come down that way, you know, will look around, end up having to turn around in our driveway to get themselves back out of there. When it floods, it's ugly. My point really in appearing tonight was to just ask the question of whether or not we have enough information about whether this storm management plan is going to create an additional issue for the county. Because the county basically had to give these guys a variance for their unique plan. And their unique plan is basically a giant French drain underneath these houses. And as a result, we don't really know what kind of floodwater it's going to be able to manage. I mean, they have some calculations that show 135,000-gallon tank basically under these homes. The amount of water that is present during these big events is phenomenal. I have some photos from the first hearing that, you know, just that just show the flooding. I noticed that they were in the packet from the zoning commission. They weren't in the, they weren't presented tonight, and I understand that the developer's working very, very hard to try to figure out how to manage this water. But the idea that they have to build a big tank under these houses and then just cover everything with permeable concrete, with the representation that permeable concrete will basically absorb the water as fast as a sand would, well, sand doesn't really absorb the water, so I don't see it creating, being helpful. And my concern, and the concern of my neighbors, has basically been the same. If this doesn't work, and it creates flooding in places that have not previously had flooding or haven't been able to handle their flooding, because most of the houses around that basin, like mine and the ones that are to the north of me on the other side of Walton... like mine and the ones that are to the north of me on the other side of Walton Magnolia Lane, they are already built elevated on stilts and they don't park their cars under there. And, you know, they've, the existing property owners have developed ways to deal with the low-line flooding in that area. And I think that the county's issue has been that they've studied it and they've just looked at it and said, "It's just too expensive to move that floodwater anywhere else. There's no place to take it. It would require drainage systems and just a lot of things that can't be, you know, wouldn't be fiscally able to do at the present time." And I don't know if ever in the future that could happen. But as a property owner in that area, I just wanted to make sure that y'all had heard from somebody who was sitting around thinking about the same things you're thinking about. And as a result of the zoning commission meeting, there was a set of conditions that were requested by the department that they become part of the zoning request or part of the zoning variance that anybody that buys in that neighborhood has to be notified of this flooding hazard, which solves the problem for people that might buy in this development, but doesn't really answer the bigger question for people that are already around this basin and basically use this basin as their flood control system, poor though it may be. At least our houses don't flood. The road floods, but we don't. So that's just all I had to say tonight and I just wanted to...
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
I'm just curious, because I don't disagree with you.
Okay.
But my question would be, if they didn't get that variance and they went in there and did what they're already allowed to do, what effect would that have on you?
I think they would have bought themselves a lawsuit, quite frankly, because they would have been flooding, you know, everybody with established properties around them. But by going to the county and saying, "Okay, let's have some state action here to give us a variance." If the problem, if the system doesn't work, then you've got the county in the middle of it.
I understand the lawsuit part, but what do you think the effect of them doing that would be?
I think it would have created flooding, additional flooding into areas that don't currently flood.
Right.
Like the adjoining structures and properties to the east of them and to the north of them principally. Because beyond me, it's basically state land, it's Camp Helen.
So you understand that they could do that?
I do, I do understand that.
I have a question for you too. You say you live immediately to the east?
Yes, it's a nine-unit townhome complex.
When was that built?
Sometime in the 1980s is my...
Did it fill there? Do you know if they filled that property when they built it?
I do not know the answer for certain, but the elevations would suggest to me that it's not much more than, you know, this much higher than the immediate east. I don't, I don't. But it creates like a basin, you know, from the east of me, I'm pretty much at the same elevation as this property, but it slopes off pretty dramatically after that. And then there's a large dune that was created by the property owner to the west on the south edge of it, and then another dune on the west edge of it. So they, it created like this giant bowl and this tract sits in that bowl.
Where is your stormwater on your neighborhood?
What is my stormwater?
Is there a lot of stormwater basins or anything there?
No, we just, it just runs off naturally.
It sounds like to me a lot of the water that's coming in there is coming from other property.
It's coming from the dune to the south and it's coming from the area to the north of us that FEMA categorized as Flood Zone X, which is under the road. The only road in there is part, is in that Flood Zone X area. Quite frankly, FEMA just, they just blew it. They should, the whole thing should have been Flood Zone X. But they didn't designate it that way. And so now we've got this tract of land that's developable, but just right now serves as pretty much the storm management system for that whole end of Walton Magnolia Lane. And everybody that lives down there, basically from the boat ramp at the end of Walton Lakeshore down, it's all, it kind of is the management system for all that floodwater.
And there's a buildable lots to the south?
There are buildable lots to the south. There is a large tract. Yeah, it's about 33 acre, it's over 33 feet wide. It's a, it's a strip of land that sits on the dune between the coastal setback line and these guys' tract. And I understand, and it goes then to the east in front of the townhome complex. And I believe dead end's right at the, at the walkover, the walkover they put in that they built for the oil spill cleanup in, whenever that was, 2008, you know, that big walkover there at the end of Walton Magnolia Lane. That, it's all that area in there. And I think it's a strip like 33 feet wide is what I believe I was told at one point. And then it runs to the west and then curves back around to Walton Magnolia. It's a pretty big tract. I don't know how big it is, but it's, it's large. It's owned by EBSCO.
Okay. Well, thank you, ma'am.
Okay. Well, thank you for your time.
You have somebody else?
Good evening. I'm calling Saks. I'm an attorney with unlikenesship and have been sworn. I don't want to make a big presentation. Our engineer's already done that. I represent the applicant. I just wanted to point out, the prior speaker said that there was nothing that showed this was an efficacious stormwater system. And I wanted to point out that while this is not the norm in Walton County because of the codes in Walton County, it is a tested water, stormwater system. It's not something that's experimental. It is something that is proven by the engineering. So I just wanted to point that out.
Has it been used before?
This has been used in other areas. And actually, the, some of the materials have been used in Walton County. Part of the presentation that had been at the zoning board of adjustments discussed the pervious concrete that lets water run off of it. And they had an image that shows the water coming down the road and right where the pervious concrete stops, the water just sinks into it. So that's one of the things that would be used here as part of the stormwater system, to have not just the lowering of the elevation, but to also have this pervious concrete and then have additional stormwater captured under the buildings. But it's not an experimental thing.
Okay, okay. I'm just curious. I've never heard of a system like this.
It's just an unusual system in Walton County because of the codes.
No, I think I understand it. I just hadn't heard of it. Hadn't heard of it and, I don't know. Honestly, it's a tough project just because of stormwater. When did this, the owner of this property buy it?
Really?
Yeah.
I believe sometime last year. Long before we knew anything about the problem.
Did he do any due diligence before he bought it?
That's what I discussed with you, just that we did. We looked at the rest of the maps, various discussions with the county public works about how much flood was there in 2014. At the time, we're not aware that it got all the way to the partial.
I understand it's part of the Flood Zone Act, you don't expect that kind of problem.
It sounds like to me they got a problem coming from a lot of the properties in there. This is just where it's settled. I was thoughtful, relieved to have been able to control just the water that they're responsible on.
Control the water that they're responsible for and everybody else should be responsible for their own. But a lot of this stuff's been developed for a long time and they don't have stormwater systems out there. So I'm kind of surprised that they're being generous enough to actually take this water and develop with it still coming in there. So if you think you can do it.
I'd also like to mention, you know what this is important, but we acknowledge and the county acknowledge that Walton County, LDC, does not have good items in a situation like this. So we did, we moved the state, went to Walton Magnolia District, we received a number of them, department permit, essentially to prove that this site is not pending any of its surrounding sites in terms of stormwater runoff. There's quite a lot of that available in the plans to establish.
Okay.
Well, and when EBSCO develops their piece, they'll have to take care of their own stormwater, which if it's coming from there. And also the houses to the north of there, it looks like there's some, the lots there are big enough that if it becomes an issue, they can start doing some stormwater there Anyway.
Where's the motion?
What's your pleasure, Commissioners?
I make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations.
My thanks.
My thanks, yeah.
Gentlemen, I have accused myself on this one, so I want to excuse myself.
You know, you always refuse yourself.
Well, I can explain this one. I heard this one on the code and I think Sidney will echo that I do have to excuse myself.
So that's heard of this before, so?
I've heard all of the people.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This brings us to the last item we're going to adjourned tonight. And it's not quite an odd thought.
I can't believe it. We're not done yet either.
We're not quite done yet either. This is the Martin Luther Reserve. It's a request approved by final orders. It's been reviewed by Bob Veronte. Major developments submitted on behalf of Southern Hydrant Homes requesting technical approval of Phase One to operate the 693 square foot multipurpose building as well as the 5,247 square foot civic pavilion and conceptually approve Phase Two, Phase Three, and Phase Three, the sub-phases A through C on approximately 9.76 acres of the future county use of Town Center One. Commissioners, this is a remedy for code enforcement for development without permits. The applicant misunderstood the state law. He now understands that this is required. He has been continuing in good faith to remedy the code violation. And getting this development order is that remedy for the code violation. You previously heard this item and voted to approve it. Recommend approval. It stumbled at the Board of County Commissioners because we didn't have a full board there. And the applicant has requested, he's modified the phasing slot and has requested an opportunity to have it reheared at the Board of County Commissioners. Technical review has approved the project. And as I said, this has previously been heard by this particular board with a positive recommendation. And it will be heard on Monday, the 25th, at the Board of County Commissioners. Appreciate your consideration. The applicant's consultant is available. If you have any questions for the particular applicant.
I'd like to just, before you get started, has anything changed in the plans since the last time you presented?
Good evening, Commissioners. Kurt Smith and all the civil engineers have been sworn in. Nothing has materially been changed. What has been changed is a clarification on the phasing of the residential part of the project. The intent has always been to do one or two of these apartment buildings at a time, not all at one time. So we clarified that in this one. And of course, we also had to update the schedule, the development schedule, because we're four, five, six months later than we intended. So those two items are the only thing that have changed since you reviewed this previously.
When did we ask for reviews? About two or three months?
It was January.
January.
And during that time, it was positive feedback, no negative public feedback that I recall. And approved and moved on to the PCT. If you would like that and explain some things on the project?
If you would, I'm not sure that everybody is here.
Okay.
So...
So the project, so we've had this before. What the project is, is 60 residential apartment buildings. The apartment buildings we're proposing are conceptual at this point, is more of a homestyle type apartment building, garages and, or garages and driveways is the idea currently. We're proposing 60 units, which comes up to approximately 6.15 units per acre. Town Center One allows for base-sensitive four units per acre with several opportunities for bonuses. We only utilized one of those bonuses, which was a commercial misuse component, which provides for an additional three units per acre, bringing us to a total of seven. We're proposing 6.1. There are probably several other opportunities for bonus we just didn't take because they weren't necessary. In addition to the apartments, there is a pool amenity component to serve those apartments. We have Phase One, which is the apartment that has been constructed already. That's a civic space pavilion with a multi-use, a multipurpose building on the side of it. That's a little odd to call a multipurpose building. But what the intent of that building is, is to be used for office space when we have, when the applicant has scientists or education students, things like that there, if there are wedding events, something like that, and go and use it for changing. So it's got a lot of different uses. The pavilion actually houses a 30 kilowatt solar array. So that's really its primary use more than anything. This is completely off-grid electrically, so the entire top of this thing is pretty much covered with solar panels. In addition to that component, we also have a commercial component in front, which is 500 square foot office. That will probably, more than likely, be the management office for these apartments, as well as 500 square foot coffee shop is what the idea is right now for that retail component. That would be really necessary. There have been several Town Center One projects come through in recent years that have been all residential. This would probably be the first one with a commercial component that I know of in the series. So the coffee shop would be great for coming into late night meetings like this and, "Hell, we're going to pick the one up before you come into the meeting." So that is the project. Phase One is built. We're asking for the technical approval of that, which we would met all the land development code requirements of that one. The other phases will go through development over process to meet all those technical requirements at that time.
Any questions, Commissioner?
Yes, answering questions you got.
You ready? Thank you. No one again signed up? Does anybody wish to speak on this item? CNN with Kilos, a public hearing. Commissioners, what's your pleasure?
Matt, what was the, what was the issues at the board room? If you don't, if you...
There was only four people.
I mean, what...
Two, I only thought, but I believe it failed on type of...
But what was the discussion? Why did, why was the two votes against it?
I don't know that I can speak to the intent of the Commissioners that did not vote
Politics.
We are recommending approval.
You can't make that sure.
Okay. Any other questions?
You making it?
Motion to approve.
Say it.
A motion of Mr. Glavell, second of Mr. Perry. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Matt, we did it. We ain't meeting next Wednesday, are we?
Well, we can do one item.
No, but we continue, son, that's right.
Oh, we got one more.
So if it's possible to reconsider that item, to avoid having another...
Which one is it?
Actually, Sidney reminded me that you did, when you voted to continue it, there were maybe people here that might have left.
Yeah, they left.
Did people leave?
Okay, so...
Yeah, so there is one issue on here though, that I kind of would like to talk to you guys about because I have a public workshop on Tuesday night and that's before Wednesday. If you're interested in discussing one item, that's a sort of a policy decision. If not, we can do it Wednesday.
Let's do it Wednesday.
Okay. Everybody's tired of it. It always happens to me.
Well, we're going to come back anyway, so. We will stand and jerk.
That done?
That's done.
Gentlemen, thank you.
Thank you.
I'll make it easy.
So we're back here Wednesday.
Yep. Four o'clock.
Yeah.
For that one item?